Hug. Melton. Mr. President.
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance or remain standing for opening remarks by Councilmember Ron Hug. Be seated. Those of you that don't know me, let me assure you that I can talk for hours about nothing. But what's more important is today we're here to listen to what you have to say. So I'm going to forego any further comments, Mr. President. Thank you.
An affidavit publication is on file and a current copy of the Open Media Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon. We welcome you to this meeting of the Omaha City Council today. As a courtesy to those in attendance and to facilitate and conduct our business, we ask you, please silence, turn them off, get those cell phones turned off, please. Thank you. Reminder that you will have three minutes to speak on an agenda item. Please stay on topic. If we would like your comments, enter into the public record. You can email our city clerk at cityclerk@cityofomaha.org. The council members receive these emails and we read them. Finally, I ask that council members, um, let's see. Council members may ask members of the audience back up for clarifying questions, but not for extra time to speak. And I would remind council members and people that are going to come up to the microphone, make sure your microphone's up to your, to your mouth so people out in the audience, but also in public, listening at home can hear you. We now have a proclamation by Councilmember Harding for Prostate Cancer Awareness Month.
Thank you, Mr. President. Harold, if you would, come up to the dais while I read this, please. Thank you. The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas prostate cancer is the most commonly diagnosed form of cancer and the second leading cause of cancer-related deaths among men, and whereas this year approximately 313,780 men will be, will be diagnosed with prostate cancer in the United States alone, this year roughly 35,770 will die this year from the disease, which is one man every 15 minutes. And whereas one in eight men are diagnosed with prostate cancer, African-American men are at the highest risk for the disease with a rate of one in six men and being 2.1 times more likely to die from cancer. And whereas education regarding prostate cancer and early detection strategies is critical to saving lives and preventing and protecting our families. And whereas the Nebraska Prostate Cancer Alliance goal is to educate the public about prostate cancer and provide early detection through free PSA tests. And whereas the Nebraska Prostate Cancer Alliance recently held its annual Cruisin' for a Cure event in Omaha where 149 men received free PSA tests. I'll, I'll take a quick pause there to say, I think last year it was 148.
Yeah, that's right.
So we, we broke it by one.
By one.
I might've been the one. I had mine.
You were the guy.
Yeah. And whereas, as all men are at risk for prostate cancer, we encourage the citizens of Omaha and all Nebraskans to increase the awareness of, and the importance of prostate screenings. Now, therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Omaha, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2025 as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Omaha. In witness whereof, we have set our hands and caused the official seal of the City of Omaha to be affixed on this 23rd day of September 2025. And before I hand it over to Harold, I'll, I'll just, uh, for my own testimonial, I guess, you might remember, um, all the members of this council. I, uh, announced that I had my prostatectomy exactly. It's been a year and two days ago now. And had it not been for, uh, a PSA screening, I would not have caught it. And it's truly a treatable form of cancer. I've, uh, been clear every test since, so we think we got it all. And it's important to get the test done because it is treatable with early detection, so.
Sure.
Um, I met Harold last weekend at, at the Cruisin' for a Cure. I've been wanting to get involved with the organization because they are all about making sure that we know about this treatable form of cancer and early detection is vitally important. So I wanted to read the proclamation and give you a couple of words to say as well, Harold.
Yeah. So I had mine in 2010 and thank goodness I'd caught mine early, even though my Gleason score was extremely high and aggressive. But, uh, mine is basically cured because of early detection. But if I had waited a year or two later, mine would've, uh, left my prostate and I'd probably be dead now. I don't know if anybody remembers David Jacobson from Q-Tac Rock? Well, he was diagnosed one year before me and his had left his prostate. And he died about three or four years ago from prostate cancer. And, uh, my friend Earl Taylor from, that I had notes since, I'm going to get emotional.
You got it. You're fine.
Who I had notes since third grade. Who had prostate cancer before I did. And then I got it and Earl and I started Cruisin' for a Cure in 2011. He died in July before our second car show. His had left his prostate and because of that, he died from prostate cancer. So it's extremely important that you get your PSA tests and get diagnosed early because it is almost 100% curable if you catch it early. And it's only a blood dr- only a blood draw and a blood test. That's all it is, to get it started. So I encourage every man over 40 to get a PSA test.
And they're, and they're free at your event?
They're free from us. We'll, we'll pay for it. Uh, if you, uh, if, if, um, if you don't have a doctor to get one from, uh, you can go to Physicians Laboratory at 49th and, and F Street during the day and, uh, ask for a PSA test and have it charged to, uh, Nebraska Prostate Cancer Alliance and they'll send us the bill.
Yep.
And then, uh, take it from there. And if you need help and, and direction from there, we'll be glad to help you get the direction from there.
Thank you, Harold.
Thank you. Thanks for doing this.
Item six, a resolution to approve the City of Omaha 2026 property tax request.
Council discussion on item number six. Got a motion and a second. Row call.
Row. Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin. Harding.
Yes.
Hug. Melton. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item seven, to consider a Class I liquor license for iSpa Lash Nail Lounge located at 14158 West Center Road.
I will open the public hearing on item number seven. Before I call for proponents, is the applicant here today? Is the applicant here for item number seven for iSpa Lash Nail Lounge?
Motion to lay over. Yes, September 30th.
Motion and a second to lay over for one week, you said?
Yeah, September 30th.
September 30th. Row call.
Row. Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin. Harding.
Yes.
Hug. Melton. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item eight, to consider a Class I liquor license for Conigliotta Field located at 6201 Maverick Plaza.
Public hearing is now open on item number eight. Before I call for proponents, is the applicant for item number eight here today?
Hello. Sorry, I haven't done this before. Ron McGaw, I am the Director of Food and Beverage for SMG Food and Beverage LLC. We are looking at, uh, adding a liquor license onto our portfolio for Conigliotta Field. We currently, uh, have liquor license at Baxter Arena for the University of Nebraska Omaha as well as Maverick Park, which is their baseball softball complex.
Can I also get your address too, please?
My home address is 7033 Hillcrest Lane, La Vista 68128.
Thank you. Is there any other proponents here today on item number eight? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Got a motion and a second. Row call.
Row. Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin. Harding.
Yes.
Hug. Melton. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item nine, to consider a Class K catering liquor license for Ancho and Agave located at 17110 Davenport Street, Suite 114.
I will now open the public hearing on item number nine. Are there any proponents here? Is the applicant here today? Applicant is on Zoom. Good afternoon.
Hi.
Name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Chris Kinnear. I'm the Corporate Controller for the company. Uh, I'm located at our corporate headquarters in Bloomington, Illinois at 1705 Clearwater Avenue in Bloomington, Illinois.
Thank you. Is there any other proponents here today on item number nine? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Motion and a second. Row call.
Row. Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin. Harding.
Yes.
Hug. Melton. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero. Items 10 through 12 can be considered together for Class K catering liquor licenses for Hy-Vee locations at 5150 Center Street, 10808 Fort Street, 9707 Q Street.
I'll open the public hearing on items number 10 through 12. Are there any proponents or is the applicant here today? Is the applicant from Hy-Vee here today? Got a motion and a second to lay over to September 30th. Uh, row call.
Row. Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin. Harding.
Yes.
Hug. Melton. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 13, to consider a Class I liquor license for Mediterranean Bistro located at 1712 North 120th Street.
I'll open the public hearing on item number 13. Are there any proponents or the applicant here today? Applicant is on Zoom.
Hi.
Good afternoon. Name and address, please.
Mediterranean Bistro and I am Holly Heitman, 1712 North 120th Street in Omaha.
Thank you. Is there any other proponents here today? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Motion and a second. Row call.
Row. Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin. Harding.
Yes.
Hug. Melton. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 14, to consider an addition application for the Class C liquor license for Corner Kitchen located at 4218 South 50th Street to add an indoor area.
Public hearing is now open on item number 14. Is the applicant here today?
Hello.
Good afternoon.
Uh, yeah, my name is Oscar Hernandez with the Corner Kitchen.
And what's your address?
Uh, my, my home address is going to be, uh, 2706 Oliver Street, Bellevue.
Thank you. Is there any other proponents here today on item number 14? Seeing none, is there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Row call.
Row. Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin. Harding.
Yes.
Hug. Melton. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 15, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Calarosa Replat 1 located southeast of 213th Street and Kansas Avenue. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Open the public hearing on item number 15.
Good afternoon, members of the City Council and staff. Kyle Vol with the ENA Consulting Group here on behalf of the applicant. What we have today is a minor plat or replat of four existing single-family lots that had extra depth and width on them, so we were able to do some adjustments. Those are older platted phases and combine those to pick up one additional buildable single-family lot. With that, happy to answer any other questions. Comes with recommendation from approval from planning.
Thank you. Is there any proponents here? Item number 15. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Motion and a second. Row call.
Row. Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin. Harding.
Yes.
Hug. Melton. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 16 and 17 can be considered together for MUD State Street located northwest of 195th and State Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 16 is a resolution to approve the preliminary plat. Item 17, a resolution to approve a waiver to the present development zone boundary of the urban development element of the city's master plan.
Public hearing is now open on items 16 and 17. Applicant here today. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. President. Councilmembers Jim Boujier, 10250 Regency Circle, here on behalf of the applicant Metropolitan Utilities District. Uh, this is a water supply and storage facility at 195th and State Street. Here to answer any questions if you have any, and thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Any proponents here on items 16 and 17? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Motion and a second. Row call.
Row. Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin. Harding.
Yes.
Hug. Melton. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero. Consent agenda, any member of the City Council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the City Council immediately following the consent agenda and the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the City Council Rules of Order.
The public hearing on agenda items 18 through 23 were held on September 16th, 2025. Is there any council discussion? Motion and a second. No further lights. Row call.
Row. Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin. Harding.
Yes.
Hug. Melton. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items 24 through 44 are today. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, and who you represent. And if you are a proponent or opponent, I'll open the public hearing. Are there any proponents on items 24 through 44? Seeing none, are you a proponent? Please come down. Please come down.
For number 24, it's Justin Poggy. I'm for proponent, uh, Trax Lounge. Um, address 1810 North 197th Street, Elkhorn, Nebraska. And yeah, we're just applying for Kino for our second location at Trax, which our original location is on, uh, 1506 South 60th Street. Been there 60 years and, uh, we've owned it for two.
I had wings last week there, so thanks.
World's best.
They are.
World's best, everybody.
Thanks for coming down.
Is there? Thank you.
Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
We appreciate it. Thanks.
Motion and a second. Row call.
Row. Festerson.
Yes.
Goodwin. Harding.
Yes.
Hug. Melton. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 45, an ordinance to authorize issuance of a purchase order to Abe's Trash Service, Inc. for rubbish container service to be utilized by the Street Maintenance Division.
I'll open the public hearing on item number 45. Are there any proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 46, an ordinance to approve a storm sewer maintenance agreement with Westwood Solutions LLC for Bondison Street paving improvements for the state and Highway 133 addition site northwest of State Street and Blair High Road.
I'll open the public hearing on item number 46. Are there any proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 47, an ordinance to accept and authorize dispersment from the Nebraska Crime Commission Fiscal Year 2024 Stop Violence Against Women Grant to enhance victim assistance services and prosecute cases of domestic violence.
Public hearing is now open on item number 47. Are there any proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 48, an ordinance to approve an interlocal agreement with Douglas County for the operation of the Joint 911 Emergency Communication System.
Public hearing is now open on item number 48. Are there any proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 49, an ordinance to create a new chapter in the Omaha Municipal Code governing local activities permitted under Nebraska Medical Cannabis Regulation Act and the Nebraska Medical Cannabis Patient Protection Act.
I'll open the public hearing on item number 49. Mr. Coosie, Mr. Grauman, good afternoon.
And Eric England was right behind me too. Other side.
I didn't see. I can't see. No X-ray vision here.
Mackazy City of Omaha Law Department. What the council has before today for public hearing is an ordinance dealing with the zoning of medical marijuana establishments permitted under state law. As you'll recall, last November, there was a ballot question on this issue about the permissibility of medical cannabis in the state of Nebraska, which passed. Following that, the legislature enacted several statutes dealing with this particular topic in anticipation for this going into effect on October 1st. The Cannabis Commission, in conjunction with, I believe, the Department of Health and Human Services and the Attorney General's Office, has been working on a series of regulations with regards to the regulation of how this medical cannabis, um, voter-approved matter will, I guess, roll out. What all that the city is doing in this situation is preserving our rights as we have as a Home Rule Charter city to conduct our own zoning. So all this ordinance that it's doing today, it is simply setting out in conjunction with the Planning Department's recommendations where these establishments should be zoned. There will be four licenses, and Mr. Grauman can correct me if I get any of them wrong. The dispensary, the manufacturer, the transportation, and the cultivation of medical marijuana. The regulations are still in flux. They have not been finalized by the state, but the regulation of medical cannabis, that is being handled by the state. That is not involving the City of Omaha in any way, shape, or form, at least with the current version of the emergency regulations that are in place right now. All this ordinance is doing is the council is saying, where in the city can these establishments be located? So I just wanted to frame that in the context for the council and members of the public so that they know what this ordinance is doing. It's not about regulating marijuana. It's not about whether medical marijuana is good or not good. It is simply establishing where in the city can these establishments that get licensed and approved by the state will be located in the City of Omaha. With that, I'll turn it over to the real authors of this ordinance, Mr. Grauman and Mr. England.
Good afternoon, David Grauman, on behalf of the City Law Department. Uh, Mr. Coosie stated most of the relevant information related to this particular ordinance. Uh, the main things to be aware of are the fact that right now, the rules and regulations in place on the state side, those are emergency rules and regulations. Those are in, in place for effectively, sorry, uh, effectively 90 days and can be extended for another 90 days. So the state will seek to promulgate these rules and regulations and make them permanent. And once they are, that will be the process that handles both the production of the cannabis as well as dispensaries and how they're able to sell the cannabis. Uh, as I looked through and reviewed these and spoke with attorneys in the state side of things, we determined that really the, the primary goal of a city ordinance is to determine that, uh, where these establishments, Mr. Coosie identified the four different establishments that are, where those are allowed to be placed within the City of Omaha. Our goal here is to make sure that the safety and welfare of the citizens is kept in place. We don't want cannabis dispensaries or grow operations in a residential neighborhood where children are around. We want to make sure these are done in a safe manner. And so in doing so, we worked with the Planning Department. Mr. England and I went through and reviewed the city zoning districts as well as the use types that we thought each of these four establishments would fit into. And between the two departments, we came up with what is currently the list that we're going to operate under. If anything changes on the state side and they, uh, end up going through the promulgation process and that results in the rules and regulations that are currently in place changing, we'll reevaluate and see if we need to change things. This does not change the current zoning ordinances in the City of Omaha. It does not change the chapter that governs zoning districts. What it does do is it creates a new chapter entitled Cannabis that will govern cannabis, uh, the cannabis regulations that are currently in place. And then we can adjust that as necessary as things change in the future on the state side. So I'm here to answer any other questions you might have on this particular issue. But at that point, I'll turn it over to Mr. England. Please.
Sure. Yeah, thank you, uh, Council President and other members of the council. And thank you for the Law Department for that, um, nice summary and introduction. I'm here mostly to answer questions, but I can, um, for the record, just state the four different use types that would be referenced within our existing zoning ordinance. And as Mr. Grauman said, we are not making any changes to the zoning code, which is Chapter 55, but rather working within those use types and those districts that we already have identified. So specifically for dispensary, it would be classified as general retail sales. Cultivator is kind of a two-part, um, component, either a commercial farm, which is limited to office, commercial, and industrial districts. Typically, you would see these growing operations to occur indoors. However, we also do have the component, if there was an outdoor growing operation within an ag district, as long as that is over 20 acres in size. Specifically for product manufacturer, it'd be classified as light industry. This is the processing of the raw material into the digestible form. And then the fourth one, transporter, would be warehousing and distribution limited. And so all of those are within office, commercial, or industrial districts. Uh, there's a few other parameters that are set in place, such as hours of operation, making sure that we have the ability for our code enforcement to follow up on any, um, you know, illegal operations or anything like that. So here to answer any questions.
Thanks. Is there any other proponents?
Good afternoon, Omaha City Council. Donnie R. Johnson, the Johnson Equestrian Foundation, and North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. We've been listening to the legislation, Lincoln, the unit camera, and with their decision on this medical marijuana. We're kind of confused on the four applications and the four people who are going to get licensed. We need more clarification on that as well. But we also want Mr. Festerson to consider that, as Senator Fisher and I, we've been looking at Benson Park for a feedlot to generate revenue. But if we can't get a feedlot on the old Benson when the golf course leave, can we actually grow medical marijuana there? Because there's a lot of land there and we need money in North Omaha. So we'll grow plenty of marijuana or a feedlot, something to generate revenue. And thank you, sir.
Donnie, can we please get your address?
Yes, sir. 4928 North 52nd. And hopefully, Mr. Harding, when you go to Washington DC, I'll get a new address.
Thank you. Is there any other proponents here? Is there any other proponents here? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 50, an ordinance to add.
I beg your pardon.
Councilmember Festerson, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. And Donnie, congratulations. This is the one day where you talk about medical marijuana, and it's on topic. On a serious note, though, the point he makes, I think, is something I did want to just ask Mr. Grauman about. I think you did a nice job summarizing what we're doing here today, which I think is the practical thing to do prior to October 1st and to add such classifications to our zoning code. Whether you supported the ballot measure or not, this is something we need to do to be responsible at the city level. And all it does is essentially say, these classifications cannot be done in a residential area, a commercial areas where that's appropriate, correct?
Correct. There are a few other restrictions where we mirror what's currently in state regulation and/or state statute, things we found to be important. So we addressed the fact that you can't be using any cannabis at a cannabis establishment. You should not be drinking at a cannabis establishment. The disposal of cannabis, the things that we felt necessary to codify in city ordinance, which were few and far between, we did put those in. Other than that, again, everything is related to the zoning of the different types of establishments and the activities they'll be conducting.
And you referenced the emergency regulations that are currently in place and may be extended. I think currently under that proposal, there could only be four cultivators in the state and only one dispensary in Douglas County. I do think there's those that question that those regulations and if they are consistent with what was approved by voters at the ballot. But so should that be challenged? And I expect they will be challenged. That does not change what we're doing here today. Whether those numbers change or the regulatory structure changes, this zoning classification is still needed.
That's correct, council member. We tried to draft it with the understanding that things may change at the state level, and we wanted what we put in place at the city ordinance side of things to be able to be static and withstand most changes that may occur on the state side. They have gone through a number of different proposed emergency rules and regulations, so it's quite possible that they change again moving forward. There have been different proposals put forward as far as how many establishments can be located in different areas around the state. You're right, at this current moment, they determined that the dispensaries are going to be placed one per judicial district, there are 12 of those across the state, in pursuant to state statute that defines where those judicial districts are. The latest version of the rules and regulations allows for an adjustment of up to one additional dispensary, and that's a change from what was in place in July, the rules and regs that were put in place in July. So is it possible that changes again? Yes. But do we feel on the city side of things that the Planning Department and the Law Department have put in place ordinances that are going to be able to adjust, you know, as they're currently written to any changes? We think so.
Thank you. Thanks for recognizing us.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Item 50, an ordinance to add sections to Chapter 20 of the Omaha Municipal Code entitled Unauthorized Encampments on Public Property to provide for rules and regulations for addressing unauthorized encampments on public property, A is communication and support, B is communications and opposition.
I'll open the public hearing on item number 50. Mr. Coosie, good afternoon.
Mackey City, City of Omaha Law Department, I'm here with Mr. Endenbosch. I just wanted to kind of give an overview of how we got to this situation, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Endenbosch to discuss the particulars. Naturally, when the time for the council has questions, I'll be sitting up there, and Mr. Endenbosch will still be here. With regard to a public encampment ordinance, these are ordinances that exist throughout the country. I think the last count was anywhere between 150 to 160 cities across the United States have an urban encampment ordinance or some version of it. They go by different names depending on the city. They're called different things, but they have a same general point, which prohibits people from sitting in line, camping, loitering, whatever you want to call it, on public spaces. As you can, as you might recall, this issue came to a forefront last June when the United States Supreme Court ruled on a case called Grants Pass versus Johnson. It was designed to resolve an issue in the law where different jurisdictions in the United States had inconsistent rulings on the legality of ordinances such as this. And the Supreme Court stepped in, as they normally do, when to resolve different opinions out there to set a final word on it. The issue that was coming before the court was essentially, were these types of laws, public encampment laws, sitting in line laws, loitering, whatever they're called, did it violate the Eighth Amendment to the Constitution's cruel and unusual prohibition on cruel and unusual punishment? And what the Supreme Court said was, no, they do not. What these ordinances do, because they were deemed to be neutral as to people's status, it would apply evenly to all people, was that it doesn't violate the Eighth Amendment because you are punishing conduct, you are not punishing status. Punishing status is not appropriate and not allowed. Punishing conduct is. In criminal law and criminal ordinances and criminal statutes, throughout Omaha, Nebraska, the United States, punish conduct, not status. And that's why the Supreme Court ruled that such ordinances were constitutional. And you did see, following the Grants Pass ruling, primarily on the west coast of the United States, cities passing ordinances such as the one being proposed today that would prohibit type, this type of conduct, again, not status. That led to the Law Department receiving an request from Councilmember Harding to prepare such an ordinance. Law Department prepared an ordinance, and the Law Department is competent, is legally sound, constitutionally sound, and would not be subject to a successful court challenge should the council implement it. The mayor signed it, and it become law. I just wanted to give that overview of the, I guess, background of how these types of ordinances and laws came into effect before I turn it over to Mr. Endenbosch to discuss the particulars of this ordinance.
President, members of the City Council, and obviously within the context of Mr. Coosie's background, obviously, this particular ordinance, which was requested, prohibits unauthorized encampments on public property. And that's all, all it addresses. There's an ability to post private property. For example, parks have closing hours. There have been tools available, criminal tools, including citing people for trespass that I'm under the impression have been used in those contexts. There isn't, citing somebody for trespass on public property is legally questionable, and as a result, that's why you have a lot of cities adopting ordinances like that. This particular ordinance attempts to define encampment, camping paraphernalia on public property in its body. Can certainly talk about what those mean if there is, the council wants to do so this week or next week, and makes it unlawful to occupy or maintain an encampment on public property. There is a requirement that prior to issue of a citation, they have an opportunity to, that people who are potentially going to be cited have an opportunity to go to a shelter. That was a requirement that Mr. Harding asked that we include in this particular ordinance. There is no question that if someone is cited for it, they would, or arrested for it, they're subject to a fine up to $300 or 30 days in jail. The amount of that fine or sentence is up to the discretion of the county court judge. I would point out that that, both the dollar amount and time period in jail are substantially lower than the, what is normal for a city code violation, which is potentially a $500 fine and up to six months in jail. There's also a requirement that if they are going to remove the property who is being cited for being, being involved in the encampment, that you have to post a notice, and that notice has to be for at least 24 hours before you can remove the items. And those items that are removed must be retained for 30 days, if not booked into evidence. And that particular mechanism of preserving the property of those people that are subject to this is pretty common, and it's pretty common whether people make it a criminal citation or treat it in some other form. Obviously, the other thing I want to say is certainly any parts, the length of each of, any of those things can always be amended, subject to the discretion of this particular council. I reviewed a number of ordinances by other cities, and this, and came up with language that I felt was consistent with what I read in other ordinances that have been adopted since the Grants Pass case. So happy to answer any questions if the council has it.
Thank you. Are there any proponents for item number 50 here today? I got a couple, okay. Read them in. Okay. The first, I have a list. Larry, don't disturb my meeting. Have him removed right now. You're out. You're not going to remove, you're not going to interrupt this meeting. You're out, Larry. You're out. He's yelling as he's going out the door. Thank you, everybody, for being civil today. Thank you.
That's not fair.
No, we're not going to do this. We're not going to do this. Please remove him right now. You're removed. We're not going to interrupt this meeting. You're removed. We're going to be civil.
Louis.
I have an order. I'm going to go in here, okay?
Okay. Well, I was asked to sign up.
I, so.
And I, I signed up.
Louis, just, just a minute.
But I'm not an opponent.
Are we in a?
Yeah, well.
So.
Yeah, I was told that I have to sign up.
Okay, but you're, you're, you're an opponent.
Okay, no, I'm not. I'm a proponent.
That's what you, what you signed in.
Well, that's a piece of paper.
Okay, we're doing proponents first, okay?
Okay.
Okay. So we're going to go in the, we're going to go in the order. Okay. All right, so we got a list of speakers that signed in. Thank you, everybody, for your patience. The first speaker for proponent is Gerald Johnson.
Okay, before I speak, I want the council to vote on my address waiver that was turned down by the clerk.
Madam Clerk.
Yep. I'll just note that according to our City Council Rules of Order, the city clerk's determination is final, so there is not an appeal process. If the council wishes to entertain the request, you need to vote to suspend the rules and then vote on the request.
Is there a motion to suspend? It's suspend. Is there a motion to suspend those rules? No motion, so please, Mr. Johnson, provide your address.
Can I make one quick comment before I start the clock?
The clock will start when you.
When I first?
No, it'll start now, after you give your address.
Okay, good. Okay. My name is Jerry Johnson. Address 17534 V Street. I'm for this ordinance because it's in a step in the right direction. Homeless encampment are out of control due to the following reasons. I'm paraphrasing. Our public officials on this issue, former Mayor Gene, I don't want to criminalize the homeless. Current Mayor, a homeless task force is on the way in a couple of months. The city councilman, we need to look for both sides. City homeless director, leave them alone. It's their home. Be kind to your neighbor. Dundee Association, get them out of Magusable, but don't criminalize them. You can't have it both ways. I believe there are laws on the books for trespassing, health code violations, and loitering. There is a presidential election order for all 50 states to get rid of homeless encampments. A reality of doing nothing is the death of a homeless woman who froze to death last winter in an encampment. Unreported crimes are being committed, building fires and assaults. What needs to be done legally is involuntary confinement in a medical facility by a judge ruling. This could be for the homeless cannot make, that for homeless that cannot make a rational decision on their own. Affordable housing is not the answer. They can't maintain a sanitary condition of housing unit based on the current behavior. I've called 911, many, many homeless people, for many homeless people lying on standing on public streets asking for money. This is very frustrating when I see the people back on the street or on a traffic medium. The city of Omaha needs to take action now. I have to respond to the mayor of Omaha's public statement on homeless encampments. Hundred police officers shortage. Ask the Douglas County Sheriff for help. Ask the State Patrol for help. If necessary, ask the government, governor for help, National Guard. At the last resort, ask for the federal government for help. A 911 call today on a non-emergency call could be answered, non-emergency, I'm saying, within two hours. We don't have six months. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, okay, I'm done. I'm going by the rules.
Thanks, Mr. Johnson. Next speaker is Eli Hernandez.
Eli Hernandez, 505 South 15th Street. I don't, this was, it sounds like you guys don't know a lot about what is going to be in this thing. It does look very punitive, and it looks very performative in terms of just like political theater, because there's no real solutions behind it. And it's just like, we're going to crack down on people that there's, they don't have the $300 they give, and they don't have anywhere to go when they get out of the jail. But I guess it looks good for people who are, you know, there's got to be a bad guy for everybody. So what I think is, you guys haven't done a very good job of trying to inflate the real estate bubble, the way you're copying Denver and Portland and Seattle and the other cities. So there isn't a huge homeless problem here. It is manageable if you would get on the ball and get your nonprofits and different organizations to actually work together.
Sir, I'm, sir, can I interrupt you? I'm sorry, I'll hold your time. Are you Mr. Eli Hernandez?
That's right.
Okay.
I told them I didn't have an address when I signed up, and they said, okay, and they just signed it up.
You just gave the police address.
Yeah.
Okay. I would, we just want to note for the record that that's not your address.
Continue.
Okay, your time's going to start now. Thank you.
All right, so it's, when, when the people up here talking is like, well, this can be used if you are laying down, if you are sitting down, if you are camping, anything. There's no real designation other than, we want this person gone, so they have to move. So, but you guys haven't, you're copying these other places, but you haven't done the things, the gentrification steps to result in the massive amounts of homelessness that these other places have. So this thing, once it passes, it's going to run out of juice pretty soon because there's not enough homeless people to keep this really like punitive austerity measure thing going. And I'm for this because as soon as it runs out and all of us people who don't have anywhere to go are grounded up in this, then we can go to you guys and everybody who's got absolutely anything that's on a public easement, on a public property, the most pettiest thing we can do, and we can go after you guys. And if you don't have that, we'll go after other citizens. It could be the most pettiest, tiniest little technical infraction, and when they get hit with it, just like we'll get hit with it when they tell us, you owe us $300 and 30 days in jail, they'll say, well, it was Goodwin, it was Festerson, Harding, Begley, Rowe, Melton, Hug, they're the ones who did this. If they would have got a real solution, wouldn't have came down to this, and we wouldn't have done that to the homeless people, which enraged the homeless people and the people that support them. So I guess it's you guys' fault. You know, this, there's no real solution being presented here. It's $300 to people who can't afford it, $30, 30 days in jail, so when you get out, you're just right back in the same situation. You'll have that little group of people that you can continuously drop the hammer on, but when that runs out and the people who are, you know, have had enough of this, we'll get petty, we'll make sure that this thing is used to jam up all kind of people who do have houses and homes, and then they'll look to you guys for, why didn't you give any real solutions? Why, why did it come to this? Thank you.
Thank you. Next proponent is Mr., pardon me. Next speaker is Mr. Jeremy Welsh.
Hello, Jeremy Welsh, Douglas County Sheriff's Office, here on behalf of Sheriff Aaron Hanson, who can't be here today. Apologize, he is out of town. He wanted me to give you the following statement. Councilmembers, as sheriff, I have the duty to voice my support for the proposed ban on tent encampments on city property, just as state law already does on state, county, and NRD property. My position is rooted in one simple fact. These encampments are dangerous. They are dangerous not only for the people who live and work nearby, but also for the vulnerable individuals who live in them. Our deputies routinely respond to calls to visit these sites, 121 in the last year, and what we find is deeply concerning. Tent encampments become hotbeds for crime, addiction, and untreated mental and behavioral health challenges. We regularly encounter felons, sex offenders, and drug addicts living in these camps. That reality places both the residents inside the camps and the surrounding community at risk. These makeshift settlements are not safe, stable places for anyone to live. They're absolutely not a place where you, where people get better. They expose people to violence, theft, exploitation, and dangerous health conditions. They also create fear and uncertainty for families who live, work, and play in the neighborhoods around them. Here's a direct quote from a complaint that received recently from a citizen in northeast Omaha about an encampment at a park nearby. about an encampment at a park nearby her house. Quote, "Kids can't even be kids. Cars are being broke into, garages broken into. Police clean up our neighborhood. Our children deserve to be children," end quote. Now, I want to be clear, we do not believe homelessness homelessness will be solved by law enforcement. This is not a problem law enforcement alone can fix, but homelessness and illicit tent encampments are two different things, and when the law is broken and public safety is jeopardized, we have a duty to respond. We don't go looking for encampments, but when we are called, we have a legal and moral responsibility to act regardless of where in the county the call came from. We cannot afford to normalize or enable a system where vulnerable people are left in dangerous, unregulated encampments. Shelters and structured programs are the best entry points for providing stability, treatment, and a pathway forward. Allowing people to remain intense on city property is not compassion. It is abandonment. For these reasons, I urge the city council to move forward with this ordinance. It's not about punishment. It's about protecting everyone, those who live in the community and those who desperately need a safer path than life in a tent. Thank you for your time and consideration, Aaron Hanson, Douglas County Sheriff.
Thank you.
I do have copies of his letter. If anyone would like one, I'll leave him over here.
Thanks. Next speaker is Mr. Jim Winston.
Good afternoon, I'm Jim Winston, 840 North 44th Street. Mr. President, thank you for maintaining order. I have read the proponents and opponents messages that were given through the, through this organization. And I have found that I've come to agree with comments on both sides of the argument. This is a big issue, one that has lots of moving parts, lots of fiery people behind them. I'm concerned that doing nothing changes nothing. What I would like to see done is I would like information to be made public. And I'm not sure exactly how to do this, but I believe there are benefits already available to the homeless population. I believe that we know some of the reasons why they choose not to take those benefits. I would like that published in a more formal way rather than coming out, this organization says here, that says there. How much do the homeless people get in cash? I believe some of them do get actual checks or cards or whatever. From where do they come? To me, again, this is a huge issue and one that one organization or purpose or person doesn't have all the information. Let's educate the public on both sides of the issue. I've decided to come down on the fore side of this ordinance because, one, it's a step forward. It punishes conduct, not status, and it can be changed in the future, as I believe it was Eli said earlier. This is, this is a step in the right direction, maybe. I don't know. If if it comes down to, you know, you guys are getting excited for for the same reasons, I I don't know. But we need to start. We can talk this thing to death. I think we need to get something done. Let's not kick the can down the road. Let's, let's put forth something that might be bad on somebody's part and and use that as a stepping stone into a long-term real solution for homelessness, mental health, et cetera. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Winston. Next speaker is Mary Jo Rice. Mary Jo Rice. Can you, can you pull those down a little bit so you can try to talk into the mic? There you go.
Okay, I agree with the.
Ma'am, can we get your name and address, please?
Mary Jo Rice, 4123 North 25th Avenue. I agree with some parts of the homelessness. And but we are having more crime, but I'm not trying to label them as bad people. We're all, you know, each and every one of us is a person. I, my thing is, is there a way to, the ones that will help theirselves, facilitate them or something to get them off the street, maybe another way or something? I mean, for the ones that want to help theirselves, I'm talking about? Because I'm for the the law on it without a doubt, but the solution, I guess I'm talking about, is throwing them in jail. And all that really going to be the long-term answer for some of them that that would be willing to help theirselves out here rather than see them get out of jail and go back in the street and all that? I guess, I mean. I'm for it, but then it, say, say they go to jail and then they're right back out here with the camp sites looking all messy and all that, is is that going to be the full solution? Like some people that are sick and can't help theirselves? Like, ain't there some kind of like community stuff they can do, like to try to show to help theirselves or something like that? When they get out instead of going back to the streets and cluttering up the streets or anything like that? Because we're all trying to deal with this problem, but it's, when they get out, they're just going to clutter the streets again. I'm just asking.
We're just listening to your comments, ma'am.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I guess that's all I have to say.
You have a little bit of time left. If that's all you have, then thank you for coming down today. Appreciate you being here.
You're welcome.
Thank you. We're still on proponents for this item. Is there any other proponents here that would like to speak? Please come down. Seeing none, we will now go to the opponents. Are there any opponents here? Thought I'd have a couple. Do we start on Zoom first or? Okay, so we're going to go through the list here. The first speaker for opposition is Ms. Nicole Engels. Nicole?
Good afternoon, everybody. I know a lot of the folks here have lived experience and will say many of the things that I plan to say better than I will. And many of my colleagues who work in homeless services will say a lot more of it better than I will. But what I have that is fairly unique is eight years in city planning department, working on homeless service grants. So what I would like to do is first say that just because other cities are doing something like this doesn't make it right, and just because it's legally sound doesn't make it right. And there are a lot of assumptions being made about who is using or who is doing property crime in a park with no evidence that it's people experiencing homelessness. But the main thing I want to do, because it it really bothered me reading this ordinance, and it's, it, the idea that nothing is being done, no one's made any progress. And so what I wanted to do is bring forward a few of the propositions that you've been brought by city staff in plans that you all have approved throughout the years. So I want to start with the Housing Affordability Action Plan. We have in their goals like advancing housing stability and ways that we can do that through providing rental assistance. Our ERA program was extremely successful in keeping people housed for a long time. It needs to be fully developed and continued because it has a lot of good that can keep people housed and stable. Another one was to increase the number of permanent supportive housing units that we have. Right now, most of the funding that goes into homeless services from the city is the Emergency Solutions Grant. And that has gone from about $410,000 a year when I started, down to about $360,000. But in the meantime, we've only seen need go up. We haven't seen rents go down. The people who provide those services are still not being paid a living wage. And the city isn't putting any additional funding towards permanent supportive housing. So if we want to make this a city issue, the city needs to step up and put in general funds and put our money where our mouth is. The next, the the last thing I want to talk about is the Home ARP Allocation Plan, which I worked on for a couple of years. When we did that, the thing that we found that we needed the most for our unsheltered neighbors was non-congregate housing, if we're going to put money into emergency shelter. We put our RFP out and we did get some non-congregate proposals. But HUD required us to show that those could operate without Home ARP funds for 15 years. That's really hard when you don't have the city backing that operation. When they did it in Mesa and in other communities in Arizona.
Nicole, your time is up. Can you also provide your address for the record, please?
Oh, I am so sorry.
That's okay.
I even thought about, 7252 North 33rd Avenue.
Thank you. Next, no, please, we're not, let's keep it, keep it quiet. We'll just keep it moving along. I appreciate that. Thanks, everybody. The next speaker is Isaiah Holliday. Isaiah. And the speaker after Isaiah is Donnie Johnson. So if you guys want to come up, if you're the next speaker. Mr. Holliday, good afternoon.
Hi, how do I do? My name is Isaiah Holliday. I live at 2235 St. Mary's Avenue. And I just wanted to say, Mr. Harding, your ordinance, Mayor Ewing, has gone on record calling the ordinance inhumane, and I would have to agree. I'm sure a lot of the people sitting in the stands would have to agree. Criminalizing the the conduct of the homelessness does not solve any of the root causes of that homelessness. You could jail every single homeless person on the street. Tomorrow, there would still be someone becoming homeless.
Hey, sorry, just real quick, there's no snapping and no clapping.
Folks, let's, let's keep this quiet. No clapping or applauding.
I do appreciate it, though. I do.
Even if you are for or against it, let's just keep it, we'll move the meeting along. Thank you. Go ahead and start your time now, Isaiah. Thanks.
Right. So the the pilot project that Mayor Ewing has suggested, rather than fining and jailing the homeless, has the idea of setting them up with the many nonprofit organizations around Omaha and actually trying to get them connected to a a support system rather than slapping them with a fine that you know that they will be unable to pay. It frames our neighbors as an other group, as a subhuman group that's deserving of of punishment, in my opinion. So I would urge every member of the council to go with Mayor Ewing's pilot project rather than going with this ordinance, which would only, you know, not address the causes but the effects of all these problems. It would only lead to more people becoming homeless, in my opinion. But thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Yes.
Next speaker is Donnie Johnson, followed by Aaron Feischinger.
Good afternoon, Omaha City Council. Donnie R. Johnson, the Johnson Requesting Foundation, North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation, 4928 North 52nd Street. I'd like to go back for a second. We'll go back to less than 10 years when President Bush allocated some of those veterans to go live on the street. Mr. Harding has brought something to to the community and everyone have a chance to voice their opinion. And my job is to make sure he stay on track so he can get to Congress, so he has brought all you folks here. And I look at some of the things, if he go to jail, there are guys out on the street would prefer to go to jail because they haven't had a meal in two or three days, two or three weeks. So that that's not a bad thing is to go to jail for 30 days to get some food. I was working on some other projects further than Bush put together for us 10 years back. And yes, Mayor Ewing can come up with a program, but at the same time, we should give Mr. Harding and the city council some type of respect for bringing this before the council. So if you're out on the streets and you haven't eaten, jail might not be a bad thing. Some people go around and commit a crime just to go to jail to get a food. And you look at the whole process, they are bringing us here to explain if you go down Saddle Creek, someone come up to your car in eight, four days. Let's go back to 1970. South Africa, they put torches around their cars to burn people up if they're coming up to their car. Least they're not saying about that. So these young folks probably wasn't born at the time. We're trying to figure out, South Africa, why are you going to burn up humans who come around your car asking for money? The United Nations said this is inhuman, so we were in the right track. Mr. Harding, you get a B for this, but you got to stay on the A so we can get you to Congress, don't you?
Thank you. Ms. Aaron Feischinger. And the next speaker is, after Aaron, is Jessica Vander Coy.
Council President Begley, members of Omaha City Council. My name is Dr. Erin Feischinger. I'm the Policy Director for the Women's Fund of Omaha. Address 1111 North 13th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68102. We offer our opposition to the proposed ordinance criminalizing homelessness because of the disparate impact this will have on women in our community. A few data points for you to consider. Women are consistently overrepresented in Douglas County eviction court. In Douglas County, over 60% of tenants in courtroom 20, just downstairs where evictions happen, are women. The number of women evicted is 16% higher than their male counterparts, and that number grows for black women who are evicted at a rate 36% higher than black men. Given the Omaha Chambers recent report that we've all read, I'm sure showing the disparate gap in poverty along racial lines, I think this should particularly concern us and be paid attention to. Additionally, 57% of all homeless women report that domestic violence was the immediate cause of their homelessness, whether needing to leave or through an eviction. We also know that children are most at risk for eviction before the age of five, and we know that having children in a rental household is the equivalent for risk of eviction as falling four months behind in rent. Eviction filings in Douglas County continue at a steady pace. In 2023, we reached an 11-year high at 5,975 evictions in Douglas County. In 2024, that number was 4,939. And as of July this year, 2,600 of our Omaha neighbors have received an eviction notice. Those filings turn into an eviction 76.4% of the time. When we consider these numbers with the consistent reports that we do not have enough affordable housing and that our shelters are at capacity, or with the news that yet another large apartment building housing low-income tenants is being shuttered for health and safety reasons, we have to anticipate that our neighbors will experience homelessness. Additional cuts to critical social safety net programs in the next few years will only exacerbate this problem. And the response to these numbers is not further punishment. It is not adding additional penalties for our neighbors in need. The response is addressing the root causes of homelessness, which is admittedly much more difficult than simply putting people in jail. There are sincere, thoughtful, data-driven solutions to homelessness, and we can take serious steps together towards those solutions. Just last week, this council approved, or had the public hearing on, I guess you approved it today, a $40 million investment in affordable housing. Let's see how that goes. We can and should and are working together to find those common sense solutions. All of us are concerned about this issue. All of us are concerned about safety. This is not a serious solution in front of us today until we have diligently worked on those solutions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Jessica Vander Coy, followed by Eileen Brady.
Good afternoon. My name is Jessica Vander Coy, 5605 Northern Hills Drive. And I am here representing the National Association of Social Workers. Social workers across the country are a voting bloc of 700,000. Social workers are interested in sound policy and properly funding services to help resolve social issues on the micro meso and macro level. As a profession, we are not in support of misusing law enforcement to solve social issues. Any serious policy proposal must be tested on three questions. Will it solve the issue? Is it sustainable? And is it evidence-based? The only thing that makes sense about this ordinance is that you are not actually trying to solve the problem or to do it sustainably. And I think we could find agreement in this time of lots of divisiveness that good questions that any successful business owner or or someone proposing change any will will ask three questions as a test is, if I'm. as a test, is, if I'm willing to spend my own money, will it create the outcome I want? Is it sustainable? And is there data to support my idea? The issue with this ordinance, we're not aiming for the same outcome, and I think that's part of the problem and why those three test questions become kind of confusing. Proponents frame this ordinance around two ideas, visibility and public safety. But the anticipated outcome of this ordinance isn't fewer people unhoused or greater safety. It's fewer people in sight while reinforcing the false narrative that a parent's appearance and situation define safety worth and ability. This is a familiar strategy in our country, declaring people unqualified, unsafe, or unworthy based on appearance or situation. And you are providing exactly why protective policies for people who potentially you don't like or don't understand or have implicit bias towards, that we need policies to protect humans from policies like this. And quite honestly, people like you who want to push dangerous narratives, that how you look determines if you are safe, qualified, or worthy. The council has leaned on safety as a slogan and not asking these test questions to propose policies in the past. Armored vehicles for Omaha Police Department, which we know doesn't lead to safer communities. Trust and community policing do. Fighting mask mandates doesn't lead us to fewer amounts of people with illness. The evidence is clear. So let's put the test to this ordinance. Does sanctioning people living in public spaces, getting a ticket, a warrant, jail time, back to the streets, another ticket, another warrant, another jail stay solve the problem? It doesn't, it doesn't actually reduce the number of people who are unhoused. In fact, it's expensive. Is it sustainable? Only if you plan to hand out tickets for years, pile up warrants, and eventually use that cycle to justify building a bigger jail. What we'll end up with is more tickets, more warrants, more unpaid fines, and larger jails, not fewer people who are housed. So let's set aside the slogans and apply the test to what Omaha really needs, which is improved access.
Time. Thank you. Thanks for coming today.
Yep.
Next speaker is Eileen Brady, followed by Rylene Barnes.
Good afternoon, members of the city council. My name is Eileen Brady. I'm the CEO at Community Alliance, 7150 Arbor Street. Community Alliance is a behavioral health organization providing a range of treatment, rehabilitation, and support services for persons with mental health and substance use challenges. We've provided outreach, housing assistance, and supportive services to unhoused individuals since 1986, especially those with mental health and substance use challenges. I struggle to see what this proposal will do to advance the goal of reducing and ending homelessness for Omaha citizens, specifically those who are unhoused. It will increase costs for law enforcement and community corrections, with people incarcerated for days or perhaps weeks, with no advancement toward obtaining housing or receiving the mental health and substance use services that they need. It will further increase the barriers for individuals seeking housing with a new arrest record. And it will further tie up law enforcement in transporting individuals to our emergency shelters if the person chooses that option instead of a citation in jail. None of these steps will help us reach our common goal of reducing and ending homelessness. The faces of those we serve continue to change year over year, but what has not changed enough is to, hasn't changed enough to keep up with the need, is the availability of safe, quality, and affordable housing, and the supportive services of mental health and substance use that are necessary for individuals to obtain and retain their housing. Let's look to solutions that are productive and will lift people up who find themselves in these circumstances, solutions that have long, we have long talked about, with not enough action behind them. Let's address the concerns facing the city and the citizens of Omaha together, and let's all take some responsibility to do so in a way that does not cause more harm, more barriers, and more distrust of the system. Community Alliance is ready to collaborate, as we have in the past years, with threshold continuum of care and with the city, that involves real answers and with everyone coming to the table with resources to help reduce the underlying issues that cause homelessness. I ask you to vote no to this proposed ordinance, and let's continue the conversations that include real solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Rylene Barnes, followed by Chris Knopf.
My name is Ryland Barnes, 2705 North 20th Street. I'm here today as a resident, not just as a resident of Omaha, but as a neighbor. I'm asking you to treat our most vulnerable neighbors like people, not a problem to be solved. This ordinance is not just punishing persecution. You're targeting people for being poor, for being visible, and for existing in public. It's cruel, it's not policy, and it's just dressed up. Let me be clear that the people you're targeting, they're not lazy, unmotivated, they're down on their luck, and they really need the city, the community, us, the neighbors, and you, the people in charge, to care about them and want them to be better, not want them out of your sight. We don't need handcuffs, we need housing. And right now, Omaha isn't delivering. According to the Omaha Housing Authority, from 2010 to 2019, we produced 13,557 homes. But in the past five years, we've only produced 910. That's according to the Omaha Housing Authority. At that track, we will never be able to have enough housing. You complain about your own constituents, but you're using taxpayer dollars to make the roads out west all pristine while these people have to sleep on their sidewalks that haven't been repaired. We do need affordable housing, but we also need programs for real community support and mental health services and funding to go towards them, like the nonprofits here in Omaha that have helped me and do work, and just need better funding because we have a big problem. When our neighbors are down, we don't kick them, we give them a hand, and we pull them It's cruel, it's short-sighted, it's unjust, and I'm asking you not just as a resident, but as your neighbor, to vote no.
Thank you. Next speaker is Chris Knopf, followed by Cassie Barrett.
Good afternoon, council. Chris Knopf, CEO of the Stevens Center. Business address 2723 Q Street in Omaha. Personal address 2514 North 187th Avenue in Elkhorn. I give you my business and my personal address because personally and professionally, I'm absolutely disgusted at this ordinance. As someone who serves this community, and as someone who is a neighbor, who is a husband, who is a father, who's a Catholic, this is reprehensible. This morning, I read that Councilman Harding complained about the lack of communication with the mayor regarding the issue of homelessness in our community. I find it ironic that Councilman Harding levies such criticism when he himself has never reached out to the people on the frontlines. Had Councilman Harding talked to me, here's what I would have said. First, most shelters in Omaha, including Stevens Center, are already at or near capacity every single day. This year alone, Stevens Center has turned away women, men, and families with children more than 3,100 times because we simply had no available beds. These are individuals who are sober, drug-free, and actively seeking safety, food, and a plan forward. Under this ordinance, the choice left to them would be jail at the cost of $170 a day billed directly to taxpayers. I also would have told him that he does not appear to understand the difference between a high-barrier shelter and a low-barrier one. A high-barrier shelter, one that opens its doors to family and children, requires a sober, dry environment. The demand for these spaces among those experiencing homelessness far exceeds the number of beds available. Yet, instead of working to expand these critically needed resources, this ordinance would leave families and individuals with no option other than jail and foster homes. I would have told him that in cities our size or larger, shelters receive city and state operational support that makes a meaningful difference in our budgets. In Omaha, philanthropy is left to foot the bill, while Councilman Harding seems comfortable paying for jail beds instead of shelter beds. I would have shared with him the impact of outreach teams. At Stevens Center and across our partner agencies that serve the city, these teams have helped more than 400 families and individuals take steps towards housing. Just two months ago, one man who had been unhoused for 10 years finally trusted our outreach team enough to say yes. And today, he lives in an apartment, continuing to work with the individuals who showed him the respect and dignity that has allowed him to believe in a better life ahead. Had this ordinance been in place, he would not have had the time or the support to get there. He would have been in jail, saddled with fines, cut off from work, and pushed further away from housing. That is the pattern this ordinance will create. More people returning to the streets, a heavier strain on emergency rooms, higher cost to taxpayers, and bigger barriers to jobs and housing. It will deliver exactly the opposite of what Councilman Harding claims to want. Finally, had he talked to me, I would have told him this: criminalizing homelessness is neither humane nor effective. Councilman Harding already...
Your time's up. I'm sorry, your three minutes is up. Thanks for coming today. Next speaker is Cassie Barrett, followed by Nicole Sakis. See, I'm sorry, I'll do the best I can with the names.
That's okay.
Thank you.
My name's Cassie Barrett. My address is 2627 North 71st Street in Omaha. 68104 is my zip code. I work as a case manager at Together in our permanent housing, permanent supportive housing program. And in that program, I work with some of our most vulnerable neighbors who are on the streets. So the folks I work with have been experiencing homelessness for the longest periods of time, and they also tend to have multiple disabilities. Sometimes that includes substance use disorders or mental illnesses. I would argue that as often as the mental illnesses are the cause of their homelessness, they are also the effect of the homelessness. Living on the streets for years and years can really change your mind and your body and have a really profound impact on you. And I just think that it's a lot more multifaceted than people realize. I also would like to point out, I've heard a lot of people say today that they want to see us do something. They want, you know, progress to be made, work to be done. There is work being done. There are dozens of people in this room right now that have dedicated their lives to this work and spend nights and weekends and countless hours trying to find housing for the people on the streets. And I think Chris, who was just up here, pointed out, there is just not enough of these resources. There's not enough people doing it, there's not enough funds to pay the people to do it. There's literally not enough beds and shelter for everyone who's on the streets to have a place and shelter. And then that doesn't even account for various barriers that might come into play when someone's trying to access shelters. So families with children, there are only three shelters in our area that will accept families with children. Most of them will separate teenage boys from their families or not accept them at all. Couples can't go into shelter together in most instances. People with severe disabilities or medical challenges cannot go to certain shelters in a lot of cases. So a lot of times, the people that you're seeing on the streets are really the most vulnerable of our neighbors, and they really just need compassion, and at the end of the day, they need housing. And that's it. I'll be done.
Thank you. Nicole is the next speaker, followed by Deanna Fiala. And thanks in advance, if I get your name wrong, I'm trying hard here, so thanks, everybody. Please, good afternoon.
Happens quite often. Thank you. Good afternoon, council members. My name is Nicole Sakis. I'm here to urge you to vote against this ordinance. This ordinance is not a solution, it's an act of punishment against people who are already suffering. Imagine losing your home, your job, and all of your supports. And instead of being offered help, you're threatened with arrest and a fine that you cannot pay. This does not create safety, it creates despair. From a policy perspective, criminalizing homelessness has been shown again and again to be ineffective and costly. Cities that have enacted similar measures have spent millions on enforcement, court costs, and jail stays, funds that could have been used to build housing, provide case management, and expand our services. Jail time does not resolve the trauma of being unhoused, it compounds it. Fines do not incentivize stability, they trap people in a cycle of debt and incarceration. And beyond policy, we must not forget the human cost. Each encampment you see is not a nuisance. These are people, people with stories, with families, and with potential, people who are trying to survive. When we choose to criminalize where someone can sleep, we're saying their very existence is unacceptable. That is not who we are as a community. There are alternatives, proven, effective alternatives, housing-first models reduce homelessness and cost less jail. Partnerships with nonprofits and faith communities expand capacity. Supportive housing, outreach, and prevention keep people safe and move them towards stability. These are the kind of investments that bring real change, not ordinances that push people further into the margins. Please reject this ordinance, let's build solutions that reflect our values and honor the dignity of every resident in this city. Thanks.
Thank you. Deanna is followed by Jennifer McAvoy.
Good afternoon. My name is Deanna Fiala, and I live at 627 South 67th Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. I speak today as a proud Omaha resident, a civic advocate, and someone deeply committed to the dignity of every person who calls this city home. I am also here today as president of Midtown Neighborhood Alliance, an alliance of 17 neighborhoods in Midtown Omaha. Midtown is the urban core of this city, and it also experiences a lot of homelessness. Midtown Neighborhood Alliance stands in opposition to the proposed ordinance that would fine individuals experiencing homelessness $300 and subject them to 30 days in jail for being found in public encampments. This isn't a solution, it's a misdirection of values, our resources, and our responsibility. We do not want our jails to become temporary shelters. They are overstretched beyond capacity, and jails were never designed to house the homeless and families with children, nor to serve as a temporary refuge for food either. Criminalizing homelessness does not make it disappear, it simply pushes it out of sight at great cost to both the individual and the community. The proposed ordinance is not cost-effective. It does cost, and we've heard this figure, $170 a day to jail one person, and that doesn't include the cost of law enforcement, court filings, and the storage of belongings. I'm told it costs just $50 a day to place up to three people in an apartment. That's more than just a moral difference, it's a fiscal one. We're not here just to oppose, we're here to offer a better path forward, one that reflects Omaha's values and invests in real outcomes. Some doable alternatives we've discussed at great length in Midtown and amongst our neighborhoods, and with input of experts as well. So I agree that education is a huge component for the opposition of this ordinance. We can expand shelters and diversify housing access, but not just more housing. We need diversified housing that meets the needs of homeless populations, or potentially homeless populations as well, those that are going into homelessness. That means rehabilitative housing, mental health housing, physical therapy, senior living. Did you know that seniors age 55 and older are now the fastest-growing segment of the homeless population, driven by rising rents and fixed incomes? We need to respond accordingly. We can expand emergency shelters, beds, and transitional housing, and our shelters are already operating at 95% in any given day, whether and other factors fluctuate those numbers. Sanctioning encampments may sound like an alternative, and that has been discussed as well. But they are legally...
Time, Deanna. Time. Thank you. Jennifer McAvoy is the next speaker, followed by Jason Feldhaus.
Hi, I'm Jennifer McAvoy, 4801 Pierce Street. I am here as a returned Peace Corps volunteer. When I joined the Peace Corps to serve my country, I swore an oath to support and defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, foreign and domestic. I want to draw your attention to U.S. Constitutional Amendment 14, which says, "No state shall make or enforce any law which shall abridge the privileges or immunities of citizens of the United States, nor shall any state deprive any person of life, liberty, or property without due process of law." Seizure of people's property is a clear violation of Amendment 14. And just for fun, I checked in Nebraska Constitution to see what it says. And it also says that no person shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law. I do want to point out that there was a gentleman who spoke about a court case, City of Grants Pass versus Johnson, a Supreme Court case. I do want to clarify that that related to the Eighth Amendment of the Constitution, and I'm speaking... and I'm speaking of the Fourteenth Amendment. He did say that there will be a way for people to access their possessions if they've been seized. I do want to tell you that I have spoken with unhoused people, and that's not how things currently work, and so I'm not sure if how that would work in the future. I also want to point out that we use a lot of language here such as unauthorized encampments. We're really talking about people. We're talking about unhoused people and their environment and their things. And when we speak of unauthorized encampments, we are taking away the humanity of people. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Jason, you're followed by Alicia Chrishetson.
Good afternoon, City Council. Jason Feldhaus, 6101 business address, Omaha, Nebraska, 7724 Papillion. I've been on the record quite a bit over the last couple of days. I debated whether I would bring in a formal statement, but I think I just want to stand before you as kind of a member of this collaborative. You're going to still hear a lot of testimony, you've already heard a lot of testimony. We can go through data, we can go through policies, we can go through that. I think it's important for you guys to know, I sent an email out to the mayor's office and all of you last Friday, kind of outlining kind of a proposal that we would like to put in place to kind of be a pilot. And we are more than willing to help work on the benchmarks with the city council, report back to the city council, and try to find strategies to move forward in this commitment. I also think it's really important to have you guys understand the passion and commitment to trying to do something different, other than going this way with this ordinance. I called all the business, all those organizational leaders in this community, and I asked them one thing: Can you give me a personal favor? That was it. Can you give me a personal favor so we can sit down and try to come forth with a new proposal, a new plan? We understand that we got to do things differently. I truly do understand that. And we understand that we need to do it with compassion, but we need to do it rapidly. We understand that the visualization of homelessness is a problem in our community. And we do understand that citizens who are dealing with this in their backyards or in public property just behind their backyards have real concerns and rights. And the Threshold COC and our homeless system do not deny that. We fully, completely, and absolutely appreciate that. But we also believe, in a partnership with you guys, the City of Omaha, and these citizens, we can find a pathway forward, because I know my leaders are committed to doing things differently. Take any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Alicia Chrishetson, followed by George McGinnis.
My name is Alicia Chrishetson. I'm here on behalf of Together at 812 South 24th Street. So, as you probably know, Together's mission is to assist our neighbors with exiting homelessness and to help them achieve housing stability. And I think we can all agree that Omaha should pursue constructive policies to prevent and end homelessness in our community. And it is possible to adopt such solutions that acknowledge the need for the city to protect the public's health and safety and acknowledge the dignity and the humanity of people experiencing homelessness. Unfortunately, I think the proposed ordinance here fails to do either. I think it purports to address some activities that create dangerous public health and safety concerns, but it's not necessary to achieve those goals. Existing law already allows city officials or law enforcement to remove visible homelessness and to protect the public health and safety, public property, trees, shrubs, waterways. These are all covered in our existing ordinances, and it doesn't require issuing a citation for trespass on public property. There's other mechanisms, and the sheriff's representative here that testified as a proponent mentioned that when they see these violations that are putting people in danger that constitute a public safety violation or are, you know, fostering illegal activity, they have a duty to go in and address that, and they do. And we rely on them for that. But there's no need to add an additional duplicative layer of law on top of what exists already. Our work as a COC has led to a 14% reduction in unsheltered homelessness in the last year. Over 80% of the people who exit homelessness to permanent supportive housing were made stably housed a year later. And these productive solutions, as people have mentioned, are not only more effective, they're also more cost-effective. So, we urge the council to invest in constructive solutions, and we ask the council to support organizations like Together in the work that we do each day by voting against this proposed ordinance. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker is George McGinnis, followed by Rosa Crankenberg, Crankelberg, getting close.
My name is George McGinnis. My address is 2220 South 123rd Street. I'm here tonight, this evening, to speak against this bill. I'm a former unhoused person and addict, recovering addict. For a long time, the only place I had to sleep was under a bridge or in a tent somewhere. This bill proposes to fine and jail a homeless person for public camping. Let me be clear, this is disgusting and dehumanizing idea. You cannot solve homelessness by punishing people for being homeless. This bill doesn't address the root causes, it criminalizes the symptoms. It's like trying to cure a fever by breaking the thermometer. Every person who is unhoused has a story. They are not a problem to be legislated away. They are human beings who are often fighting a battle many of you cannot even imagine. They are our neighbors, our veterans, our family members. They are individuals who have fallen on hard times and need a hand up, not a fine or jail cell. A fine, it's just a debt a person can't pay. A jail sentence, it's a cycle of despair that is almost impossible to break. This bill will not make our community safer or cleaner, and will only push people further into the shadows, making it harder for them to get the help they desperately need. Instead of criminalizing homelessness, we should be investing in real solutions: affordable housing, mental health services, and job training programs. We should be building bridges, not burning them. I know firsthand that recovery is possible, I'm a living testament to that. After 15 years, I got four years of living in a home. It works if you find the right solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Rosa Crankelberg, followed by Steve Frazee.
Hi, my name is Rosa Crankelberg. I've submitted my address to the city clerk's office. Thank you for this opportunity to speak today. When I was just three years old, I was thrown out of a second-story window. It was an act of mercy considering what I was born into, but the foster care system and what followed proved to be no different. The message I received from every caretaker was to be grateful for scraps and never forget where I came from. At 17 years old, I worked full-time and moved through life as a functioning alcoholic. When alcohol could no longer numb the pain, I turned to meth and met the person that would torment me for the next five years. I experienced a new level of degradation that I would later come to know as sex trafficking. My brain had split to keep me alive, and I would hear so many voices in my head telling me how worthless I was. Reality was too painful. During times when I could leave, I would wander the streets. I tried to remain invisible so I didn't have to see people looking at me with disgust. Sometimes I stayed in encampments, but nowhere felt safe. Inside was where the bad stuff happened, and outside, I risked being taken. What I wanted more than anything was to walk into the sunset and disappear, to be forgotten like I had always felt. The message I want you to hear today is that people deserve to be treated with dignity and respect. Being unhoused is not a personal failure, but the result of circumstances that require compassion. Mother Teresa committed her life to one mission, giving people their dignity. What I lived through was a walk in the park compared to some of my unhoused fellows. Our stories can begin tragically and with help can inspire hope for others, which is why I serve with Threshold Street Outreach Team to help find housing solutions for individuals and keep tabs on those we've not seen. No one is forgotten. I have been through hell to get to where I am today. I get to live a life I love, serving so many communities, feeling safe for the first time in my own apartment and paying my own bills. Even still, the hardest lesson I've had to learn in nearly eight years of sobriety is how to ask for help. There are so many more people like me that want to help support the unhoused community because we know it works. It does require patience because we are asking the human brain to change the neuroplasticity and believe that hope is possible when we choose a different way. Housing programs are way less expensive than putting a person in jail. Mahatma Gandhi said, "A society is judged by how it treats its most vulnerable members." Please look closely at my face. And remember it. So, when you see someone begging for food or sleeping under a bridge, you think of me. Because I am them, and they are me. For all that came before me and those that will come after me, we know that hope is only a hand away.
Thank you. Steve, you're followed by Tim Carter.
Hello, City Council. Steve Frazee, Chief Impact Officer, Open Door Mission, 2828 North 23rd Street East. This year, Open Door Mission is celebrating its 70th anniversary. We've been providing emergency shelter, transitional housing, and permanent supportive housing that's appropriate to the needs of our guests, students, and tenants. In the men's area, last night, we slept 64 men on the floor because all of our bunks were full. We welcome men, women, and families to our campus to meet their needs. We don't ever require anyone to stay. Dropping a person or a family at our door under duress is not only inappropriate, it's inhumane. It doesn't even rise to the small standard of the good life. There are many reasons why people find themselves in homelessness: mental health, addiction, defeat, release from incarceration, hospitalization, loss of job, domestic violence, overwhelming debt, medical problems, and others such as gambling. Omaha is not in the position to universally solve those problems. Issuing a ticket is insulting. Open Door Mission and other organizations like us, we solve this problem individually, one at a time. There are federal-state laws and local ordinances that place obstacles to the service provider and disincentives to those who are working on homelessness. The defeat of this ordinance is only good if something else is done, something to make a difference. Omaha service providers work incredibly well together. Just last night, I got a call from Linda Toomey from Santa Frances and a need to place a woman and her child into shelter, and we were able to do that. We do that with Stevens Center, Micah House, and Joshua House all the time. We work together to utilize the resources that we have to the benefit of the most. This problem is bigger than the city. You need to include, in my opinion, the state officials as well, and maybe our federal colleagues as well, to find a solution to be able to pay for the desired end that you are identifying. I encourage the city to work with homeless service providers. Just a fun aside, we have a shovel-ready project that is one- and two-bedroom apartments that is just under your $40 million price tag that the mayor has put forth. It's only $36 million. So, we can get 200 people off when we would get that construction done. So, thank you very much. Please, not only consider not doing this, but doing something positive for the members of our community who aren't doing so well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Tim Carter, followed by Kate Carlson.
My name is Tim Carter, and my address is 17082 Dora Hayman Parkway. Good afternoon, Council President and members of the council. My name is Tim Carter. Running for city council this past spring gave me the unique opportunity to talk directly to thousands of people across District 7. I can tell you this, Omaha voters do not support foolish ordinances that criminalize our most vulnerable. They want solutions that work, not political theater dressed up as public policy. And let's be blunt, Councilmember Harding is using this chamber as a platform for his congressional ambitions. Just last month, he tried to erase DEI inclusion from the city budget. That effort failed, but it did reveal the playbook: culture war politics instead of solving real problems. And now, with this ordinance, the councilman's doubling down, criminalizing the mere act of surviving while unhomed, and it's disgusting. This ordinance would fine people up to $300 and even send them to jail for 30 days. And for what? For not having a roof? For being unlucky or going through a tough time? We already have laws on the book and policy that focuses on outreach, which we know is the right approach. And this proposal doesn't fix anything, it just makes life harder for people who are already struggling. And it comes at the worst time, and you know it. This city just lost federal COVID relief money that helped people stay in their homes over the last four years through critical rental assistance. And from what I can see in your 2026 budget, nothing was added to replace it. So, that means more people are going to be at risk of ending up on the street. Instead of putting resources into housing and outreach, this ordinance puts its energy into fines and court dates. That doesn't solve the problem, it just kicks it down the road. And other cities have tried this. Denver has showed us that camping bans lead to more arrests and instability, while cities like Newark, New Jersey have showed us what actually works, and that's supportive housing, helping people get into permanent homes with services. They saw a 57% reduction in unsheltered homelessness from 2022 to 2023, and sustained 30% to 40% drops over recent years. I'm going to close with this. When I campaigned, I stood alongside many of you on this council at forums and events, and we told voters that addressing homelessness mattered and that our city could do better and that compassion must guide policy. I believed you with those commitments then, but Omaha voters still expect you to uphold them now. Reject this absurd, cruel ordinance, choose solutions, not scapegoats. Choose funding, not fines, and choose to lead Omaha forward with humanity. Thank you. And I have record for the clerk if they'd like.
Thank you. The next speaker is Kate Carlson, and we better invite Vern Carlson with Kate, so if you both want to come down at the same time. And it is followed by Pete Miller after the Carlsons. Welcome.
I'm Kate Carlson. Our address is 800 Buckboard Boulevard in Papillion, Nebraska Nice. I've lived in all of the surrounding states of Nebraska, as well as Colorado and Minnesota. I've also lived in Germany for almost seven years, and I've traveled all over Europe, a lot of different countries there. Retiring last year after working most of my life with special ed, developmentally disabled, vulnerable populations, as well as in property management field. The last property management company I worked for, my district manager was more interested in me evicting residents rather than working with them and helping them make payment arrangements, which was well within the SOP and my ability, as confirmed by the president of the company. In Omaha, the average two-bedroom apartment costs $1,400 to $1,700 a month. To qualify for apartment housing, you need to make at least three times the amount of rent. For a two-bedroom at $1,700 a month, you would need to have $5,100 a month, which is $61,200 a year. 38% of households in Omaha have an income of $50,000 or less. 45% to 46% make $60,000 or less a year. Europe has solutions. I won't go into all the details of the different solutions, but they've got Housing First, which provides immediate housing, the legal right to housing, the Dalot Law in France. Sweden and Norway have strong housing and tenant protections. Comprehensive social safety networks, healthcare, mental health, and addiction services. Minimum income and unemployment benefits, subsidized housing or rent caps. Public housing investments, public or cooperative housing, integrated support services. I won't go into all the details of that. It comes down to Maslow's hierarchy of needs. We need to take care of the vulnerable population. If people don't have their basic needs met, how do you expect them to survive and thrive? This is not Nebraska Nice. Most European countries are top-ranking in the happiness index. America is at about 24, out of the civilized countries, if you want to call it that, or industrialized countries. We can do better, and we must do better. Again, Maslow's hierarchy of needs. Find real solutions.
So, Vern Carlson, 800 Buckboard Boulevard. I do see both sides of this issue. Everybody wants clean cities and safe citizens, but this is a politicized event, so I'm going to go into some politics here. Republican cuts to social programs, low-income schools, SNAP, Medicaid, the war on drugs, lack of corporate regulation, corporate greed, lack of affordable housing, income and wealth inequality- lack of corporate regulation, corporate greed, lack of affordable housing, income and wealth inequality, and tax cuts for the rich and corporations will exacerbate the root cause problems of homelessness and our national debt. Republican policies will swamp the homeless shelters Mr. Harding wants to build. Nonprofits aren't going to cut it when there are deep systemic issues at play. Apartment complexes that hastily evict tenants, like my wife just alluded to, for late rent payment are a major problem. The companies with high eviction rates should be investigated, and if they are found to be bad actors, they should be fined or have their charters removed. Rent assistance could help as a stopgap measure. Companies that actively damage the communities they reside in need to be dealt with. A renter that has an eviction on their record has a problem. No one will want to rent to a person who has been homeless or evicted or who has an arrest record because of fear their property will be trashed or they will not be paid rent. So, some solutions are: to the lack of affordable housing, expand affordable housing stock via zoning reforms and incentives, target 30,000 storage units, scale rapid rehousing and emergency rent assistance to prevent evictions, build family-specific shelters and encampment outreach for mental health issues, integrate supportive housing with onsite mental health services, expand Santa Frances House programs, increase access to low-barrier treatment via street outreach teams. For substance abuse, fund harm reduction and treatment programs, sobriety optional shelters, pair with job training for recovery support. Low-income unemployment: provide employment services and wage subsidies tied to housing vouchers, advocate for minimum wage increases and workforce development. Domestic violence: bolster specialized DV shelters and legal aid for protective orders. Offer trauma-informed family reunification. And again, because this is political theater, on September 10, 2025, broadcast of Fox and Friends, Fox News host Brian Kilmeade suggested that homeless people with mental illness who refuse aid should be given involuntary lethal injection. He followed up by saying, "Just kill them."
Your time is up. Thank you.
He later apologized for that statement.
The next speaker is Mr. Pete Miller, followed by Jeannie Metzger.
Hi, my name is Pete Miller. My address is 5015 North 104th Street, Omaha, 68134. I appreciate this opportunity to speak about my role as the Street Outreach Manager for Threshold COC and why I think this is a misguided ordinance that would only make a difficult situation worse. I've been working in street outreach in Omaha since 2011, and I've seen it grow from a small handful of folks to the mighty team it is today, a team I am incredibly honored to coordinate, made up of representatives from 15 agencies. These outreach case managers are some of the hardest-working people I've known in my 30 years in the field, and every day, I am in awe of what they do: bringing services to people where they are, whether that's food and blankets, or direct medical care, or connecting them with mental health services, helping them obtain IDs and social security cards, driving them to apply for apartments, and making sure they get the small but essential help of that first month's rent and deposit. And after they move in, some furniture. It's challenging work, but they do it with open hearts and extended hands because they know that being met with humanity, patience, and compassion is essential. To those who think arresting the homeless makes more sense than helping them get into housing, this could all sound naive, except that it works. That approach, that coordinated street outreach response, that compassionate, humane response, helped get 443 people off the streets into permanent housing last year. 443 people. It works. There's more to do, but it works. Making it a crime to try to survive, scattering encampments, throwing out people's belongings, traumatizing people with sweeps, clogging up the justice system, diverting police resources, none of those does a single thing to house anyone. It makes it harder to house them. The people living on the streets of Omaha are not strangers. They're our family members, our former classmates, our fellow citizens, your constituents, our neighbors, our friends. Please stand on the right side here, the side that's both compassionate and rational. Please vote no on this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeannie Metzger is followed by Sarah Paul.
I'm Jeannie Metzger, 15474 Corby Street, 68116. I just have a couple of observations. You've heard it before, but this is a reminder that not everybody can go to a shelter. There's a lot of reasons why shelters turn people away: mental illness, drug use, being listed on the Sex Offense Registry, or because the shelters are full. All of those are reasons that people get turned away. So, giving people a choice between going to a shelter or taking the $300 fine isn't really a choice for a lot of people. And then, I noticed that in April of last year, you, Councilwoman Harding, brought another proposal for an ordinance change that passed that increased the restrictions on where people on the registry are able to live. So, over years, with the increasing number of people on the registry, that is going to move more people into homelessness. So, you bear some responsibility when it comes to increasing homelessness. And then, my other observation is that $170 a day to jail someone means that you're willing to pay for their housing, but it has to be in jail. So, think about paying for their housing in a nicer place than jail. Telling the homeless to go home isn't really a solution. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Sarah Paul, followed by Courtney Coran.
Hi, I am Sarah Paul Ramirez. My address is 5027 South 23rd Street. As a retired community health nurse, I agree with the previous speakers that the proposed ordinance will not solve any problems and is likely to cause more. Mr. Harding, I do believe that you care about the public welfare, based on Agenda Item Number One. But I think this proposed ordinance is a dud. So, I encourage you all to vote no and get on to other things.
Thank you. Next speaker after Courtney is Canetta Wainwright.
Hi, my name is Courtney Coran, 6112 North 109th Street in Omaha, Nebraska, 68164. And I also work for the VA as a social worker in homeless programs. And I can tell you, every single day, I meet with somebody new, whether it's via phone or in person, who is homeless. Currently, I have 40 people in my caseload. 24 of them are in some variety of street homelessness. They're in their cars, they're in encampments, they're in just wherever they can find. Very high numbers of folks who have nowhere to go. Of those 24, 14 of them are women and children who have been turned away from the shelters repeatedly because the women and children's beds are full. They call daily. Every once in a while, but once every six months, I see somebody get in. But there's just not enough beds. I have multiple folks who are either couples or elderly. I have five of them. They have nowhere to go. They have been turned away from every single shelter because they need a higher level of care. But in Omaha, we have very limited assisted-living facilities. We have very little offerings and times to get people into those facilities, and they have nowhere to go. And because the shelters have to turn them away because they cannot take care of themselves, and they have since lost housing, they are under the bridge. They are on the streets. The most vulnerable people I can picture are the people who would be impacted. One of the biggest barriers that I think a lot of folks aren't aware of comes with housing is documents. I have to waste so much time just to get a letter from the Social Security Office so that I can get somebody a Section 8 voucher. We don't have enough Section 8 vouchers in our housing programs as the VA, and neither does the city. And we need things like increased Section 8 housing. We need non-congregate shelters. And I would strongly encourage any citizen who is worried about an encampment near them, instead of calling 911, instead of calling the non-emergency police, call the Street Outreach. I have their phone numbers. I have the access points. We are trying to help folks, but there are folks we don't know about. And if you call 911, that solution is not going to come. But if you call Street Outreach, something might change. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Canetta Wainwright, followed by Joy Catarima.
Hello, my name's Anetta Braddarty, and I'm 62 years old. My best friend Chrissy died on the streets because they would not let her in because she had a support animal. They would not let her in. She had seizures. And that's the reason why this dog was with her, but they wouldn't let her in the shelter. It took me over a year of staying in the shelter to accommodate a new place to live, which I lived a year and a half. But because I had no staff to help me remember things, I was evicted. So, I've lived homeless without a place to stay for numerous months now. And I just don't understand why us oldest people have to stay on the streets. I don't understand it. We paid for what we should have, but we don't get it. And I just don't understand it, and that's all I got to say.
Good afternoon. My name's Canetta Wainwright. I don't have an address, but you guys know that because I was here about six weeks ago. Nothing has changed for me in particular. However, I wanted to discuss the fact that the encampments, although they are not something that... I don't believe in encampments. I don't believe in litter. I don't believe in public drunkenness, and I don't believe in panhandling. I think I warned a group of property owners about this eight years ago, and it came to fruition. However, I don't believe in the criminalization of a economic issue. That should have been solved. And it should have been solved under the McKinney-Vento Act. It should have been solved when it was revised under the Hearth Act. And under the Hearth Act, Section 896-3612, "Develop constructive alternative to criminalizing homelessness and laws and policies that prohibit sleeping, feeding, sitting, resting, or lying in public spaces." That is part of the Hearth Act. So, to your attorney, look at the Hearth Act and then think about what you said at the beginning of this conversation. I also believe that there is enough money for homelessness programs. There has been... Even though it was during the pandemic, there was $47 million in 2022, 2023, and then another $67 million the following year, just to the continuum of care. So, how come we haven't ended homelessness? We have inter-agency councils on homelessness. There's 19 agencies in that council. You mean to tell me that out of all of the federal agencies that work together, you guys haven't ended homelessness yet? So, I do have an issue with you having a housing or homelessness coordinator. First off, home is where the heart is. So, it's not a homeless coordinator you should have.
Ma'am, your time is up. Your three minutes is up. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next speaker is Joy Catarima.
I do want to say something because...
Ma'am, your time is up. I got to cut you off at the three minutes. Thank you.
I want to clarify that the person before...
Joy, you're the next speaker. Ma'am, I respect...
The person before me was not me that spoke.
Thank you. Thank you. Joy Catarima is the next speaker, followed by Teri Crawford.
Catarima, you had it right originally the first time.
I'm sorry.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers. My name is Joy Catarima. I'm here on behalf of the ACLU of Nebraska. Address is 134 South 13th Street, Suite 1010 in Lincoln, Nebraska. My personal address is 5660 South 96 Court, Omaha, Nebraska. I work as Policy Counsel for the ACLU of Nebraska. And for nearly 60 years in Nebraska, the ACLU has worked in courts, legislatures, and communities to protect the constitutional rights and individual rights of all people. Beyond one person, party, or side, we, the people, dare to create a more perfect union. According to the United States Census Bureau, the percentage of people in Douglas County living in poverty is 12%. Citations and fines should not be imposed on people for policy choices that keep people in poverty. Citations that are impossible for someone experiencing homelessness to pay only leads to escalating debt, damaged credit, and jail time, each of which creates further obstacles to attain housing. A survey of respondents in Seattle, which has a similar ordinance, found that legal fines and resulting debts extended homelessness by nearly two years. This body has heard a number of creative solutions offered today in opponent testimony. I would urge this body to consider those versus trying to arrest our neighbors who are experiencing the trauma of poverty. We cannot arrest our way out of homelessness. Removing unhoused people from public spaces without doing anything to help them is inhumane and degrading. Laws that make it a crime to be homeless waste money, make communities less safe, and make it harder to solve homelessness. Instead of passing counterproductive laws, you should be focusing your energy on ensuring that everybody has a safe place to call home. By ensuring that everybody has housing and support that meets their needs, we are able to build a safer, healthier, and more just community. We urge you to consider the opposition testimony that you've heard today and vote against punishing our neighbors.
Thank you. Next speaker is Teri Crawford, followed by Dominique Miller.
Good evening. My name is Teri Crawford. I am Second Vice President for the NAACP Omaha branch. I am also a resident. I am a lifetime community member. I am a person who seeks justice, human dignity, and equitable public policy. I hope everyone in this room knows who Bryan Stevenson is because he said that the opposite of poverty is not wealth. The opposite of poverty is justice. And I think that's why we're all here, seeking justice for those that are unhoused. I stand before you, the council, in opposition of the proposed ordinance that seeks to prohibit encampments, incarcerate unhoused individuals, and impose a $300 fine, which effectively criminalizes poverty. The ordinance does not address the root causes of homelessness, which includes, but is not limited to, poverty, lack of affordable housing, untreated mental illness, and systemic inequities. We saw how this occurred with redlining across the nation, right? That continues to have an impact in these communities today. Incarceration of unhoused individuals strips them of their dignity, disrupts social services, and it perpetuates a cycle of poverty and criminalization. Most disturbing to me is that it has an eerie historical mirroring effect of what was started after the Civil War with Black Codes, where we criminalized vagrancy and loitering and reincarcerated melanated people and reenslaved, basically, melanated people through... I know the attorney talked about the case that went before the United States Supreme Court, and that was based on separating conduct-based status. And I don't know exactly how we do that because it's criminalizing both of those things when we are looking to incarcerate people because they don't have a home. There was a case that also went before the Tenth Circuit, the Ninth Circuit. It's Martin v. Boise, where that court held in 2019 that cities cannot punish individuals for sleeping outdoors when there are no adequate shelter alternatives that exist. So we have to ask ourselves in Omaha, Nebraska, are there adequate alternatives that exist for these people? I think we have to say that there's a resounding no to that question. So what do we do about it? Well, I think there should be a call to action. I see him on the yellow light. Urge the council today to reject this ordinance in its current form, and if there's a way to revise it...
Ms. Crawford, your time is up. Thank you for being here today.
You're welcome.
Next speaker is Dominique Miller, followed by Sophie Gravy.
Hello, my name is Dominique Miller, 3129 South 41st Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68105. Before I get started, I believe, Mr. Coos, you called some of these unhoused neighbors of ours homes and tents camping paraphernalia. As a peer support specialist with a local nonprofit here who works with primarily unhoused neighbors, I would just like to give you a list of things that we compiled this morning for them to bring, for me to bring to you, of things that have been taken due to them having camping paraphernalia. Direct Express cards, which is their primary source of income when their SSI is deposited. If that comes up missing, along with their IDs, social security cards, birth certificates, all three of these things are needed in order to replace this direct express card, which is their only form of any type of income. Their SNAP cards, their medical insurance cards, which at that point will hinder any type of mental health care or emergency visits or any type of care that they're needing for... They fall in the weeds trying to get back to their encampment, and they have blisters and things. And now they are no longer able to be seen because they don't have their insurance card because their camping paraphernalia was taken. They have lost ashes of their mothers. They have lost baby pictures of the only pictures that they have of themselves, their family, their children. They have lost obituaries of their loved ones, their clothing, "my home and everything I own." So with that being said, again, I am a peer support specialist at a local nonprofit. I work primarily with street homeless peers, and I am also the daughter of a man that has experienced street homelessness on and off for the last 25 years of my life and his life due to his own mental health. The most impactful thing I've learned in my years is the look of exhaustion on people's faces when they're told again and again they need to keep moving. You can't be here. We've called the police. There's nowhere for you to rest. It's endless motion, corner to corner, sidewalk to sidewalk, constant reminders that you don't belong. They go to a shelter, but today Omaha does not have enough shelter beds. The number is the story. People who live unsheltered in Omaha have grown eightfold in the last decade. Over 1,500 people are unhoused in our metro city. It costs $36,000 a year to cycle a person through police, jail, ER, and shelters, but supportive housing with wraparound care services costs about $13,000 a year, saving $23,000 per person and more than $11 million annually if we just helped 500 people. I would like to know the data you are using to support spending $11 million a year of taxpayer money for something that is ineffective at solving the problem. How does the success of spending improve the situation for anyone at all? There is an enormous amount of data showing that wraparound supportive housing is both cost-efficient and effective at minimizing housing instability. This last weekend in Minneapolis, someone shot at least five people in an encampment on private land. The city bulldozed the private landowner's rights by bulldozing the encampment the day after it happened. In an interview, the landowner pointed out that when...
Ma'am, your three minutes is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Sophie Gravy, followed by Angel Sharp.
Dear Omaha City Council, my name is Sophie Gravy. I live at 5013 California Street. I stand today in opposition to this ordinance. As someone who works with unhoused individuals daily, I can tell this ordinance is coming from people who do not care about them. This is an ordinance that criminalizes homelessness, plain and simple. The people that support this ordinance just don't want to have to see unhoused people. And I think that that's really sad. It's a shame that some want to turn their back on our cities most vulnerable. If you don't work with unhoused, you may not know that shelters are often not the safest place for them to be. And like many people have said earlier, a lot of our unhoused individuals can't go to these shelters. And we also don't have enough room in our shelters, as people from the Stevens Center and I'm sure many of others said. They're sleeping on the floors. They're so full every day. I have people come into my office. I work with Dominique. We can't get them into a shelter. We literally bring them because if we call, they're going to say that they're full, and we just have to show up there. That's something that happens every single day at my office. This ordinance is not a solution. We need more affordable, low-barrier housing in Omaha. We need more adequate mental health and substance use care in our city because that's really the root cause of homelessness in the whole United States. How lucky and privileged are you, Harding, to have never had homelessness touch you personally? You are so removed from this world that you are willing to be so cruel to our most vulnerable neighbors. As many have already said, there are dozens here today that have dedicated their lives to this work, including me. We don't need more redlines. We need more resources and people that care. If you pass this ordinance, that shows me you haven't listened to us or our unhoused neighbors, and you don't care to. City council members, I implore you to do the right thing and vote no on this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Angel Sharp, followed by Cecilia Schneider.
Angel Sharp, my address is 3738 Francis Street. I am standing here today to oppose this bill that would fine $300 for camping on public property. This next statement may shock you, but I know firsthand what it's like because I've been homeless. I've laid down at night, not knowing if I'd be woken up by the cold, by hunger, or by someone, including police, telling me to move along. And in those moments, what's hurt the most was the struggle to survive. It was feeling like I was being treated as a criminal, not a human being in need of help. I want it to be said that by police taking unhoused, that puts fear into the community that makes the unhoused people not only be afraid of the police, which in turn can make them not only be scared to ask for help, but ultimately view the police as there to harm and not to help. I want to also point out that when someone goes to jail and someone asks why they're there and the answer is because I am homeless, that also makes the judicial system and the police seem like a joke and that they are bored. A $300 fine would not have gotten me off the street. It would have only buried me deeper in hopelessness. What I needed then and what these people need now was understanding shelter and, as you've heard, a chance to rebuild. While I do understand that those unhoused sometimes act out of criminality, I want you to try and understand that sometimes there's no job that will hire these that don't have an ID, and most of the homeless don't have them. I currently have someone in my life who, if he would have not had me in his life, would indeed be homeless. He is not a drug user, a criminal, or someone who wants to be harming others. He's just someone who happens to be in need of help along the journey of life. He happens to have me while there are others who don't have anyone and are forced to be out in part of the public unhoused. I do not think this bill offers a way forward. I think it will punish people for being poor. I think it hides the problem instead of solving it. So I ask you to consider compassion over punishment and real solutions over quick fixes.
Thank you. Cecilia Schneider is followed by Katrina Eilers.
Hello, my name is Cecilia Schneider from 1141 South 30th Avenue, 68105. I speak from experience, lived experience. I was homeless as a teenager. I've stayed in youth shelters and DCYC when shelters were full or refused to take me. I volunteered at Santa Frances, Hart Ministry Center, Open Door Mission, and Bethlehem House. And I have been and am a coworker, friend, neighbor, and loved one of homeless people. This ordinance fails to acknowledge the root causes of homelessness and the failure of local shelters to provide safe, non-congruent housing, which is a major reason people choose to sleep elsewhere. Because what is their choice? Our community members deserve more than the basics that jail provides. They deserve dignity, compassion, and respect, the same afforded all of us who have not been accused of a crime or have not fallen on hard times in the public. Forgo this ordinance that claims homeless people are different from us, they're not entitled to public spaces like the rest of us, they should be out of sight and out of mind. Without proper interest in the causes of homelessness, the local jail will fill with homeless people and overflow back into public spaces eventually, as our community members are becoming homeless at a terrible percentage. Do not fool yourselves or us into thinking that our population of homeless people will not grow if you threaten them with incarceration or unsafe or unaccommodated beds in overcrowded shelters. That should be our cause for concern. Why are people left to sleep through deadly weather in vulnerable public spaces? Why are our community members unable to afford housing, transportation, or health care? Why are disabled veterans having to sleep outside with their service dogs? Locking homeless people into cells with accused aggressors further traumatize our most vulnerable members of our community that goes for jail and shelters. Not every homeless person is aggressive or dangerous, but this ordinance makes the claim that they are. Forgo this ordinance and instead view homeless people as people, our neighbors, and reject the bias that they are less deserving of privacy, dignity, and safety, which is found not living in jail. Do not fool yourself... Okay. Until we create a better alternative to sleeping outside, we should not blame homeless people for doing so and allow people, all people, the right to keep themselves safe the ways they know how. When I was homeless, I was a teenager, and I made a list of what I wanted. I wanted privacy, safety, to be healthy, comfortable, and have long-term stability, and have trusted and loved ones by my side. You break families up by forcing them into shelters. You break... That's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Katrina Eilers is followed by Elise Emanuel.
All right. Sorry, I've been talking a lot lately. My name is Katrina Eilers, and I live at 13462 Wright Street. I'm a veteran advocate and people's advocate at this point. I have been protesting for veterans' mental health rights for a year and a half, and in that time, I have met countless veterans and other human beings who experience homelessness. According to data from HUD, there are approximately 129 to 241 veterans experiencing homelessness in Nebraska, over 90 of them here in Omaha. Based on $170 a day on the low end, you're talking over 20 grand in prison instead of putting them in the VA or somewhere else they could go, but we don't have the resources for that. And I understand that we do have more programs than civilians, and that's what makes this even worse, that there's a single homeless veteran in my state. I also believe that these numbers are on the low side due to often relying on self-reporting or a single yearly head count. I myself am an alcoholic. And by the grace of my retirement and my benefits, I was able to receive treatment for my disease. I honestly feel that if we treated our unhoused population like the humans that they are instead of criminalizing their tragedy, we can open mental health and substance use facilities, we can beef up programs that help house and employ this population of Nebraskans. I spoke with a former prison guard who said they were often left no choice but to cuff a person experiencing mental illness to their bed for both their safety and the patient's. I honestly feel like both sides of this issue are all mad at the same people, and those are the ones holding the purse strings. Our prisons are already overcrowded per the Investigator General Report published September 2024. So how will room be made, and why can't that room be made in a different way? We all have one thing in common, and that is that we are human beings. I'm just one guy, and I don't know the solution, but it seems like you have a wealth of knowledge of professionals in this very room. And if maybe we started having a conversation instead of yelling at each other, we could actually fix the problem and make a real difference in the world. So please, don't let them arrest my unhoused friends that I've met on my corner protesting that have kept me safe. Thank you, and have a good day.
Thank you. You as well. Next speaker is Elise Emanuel, followed by Melissa Schuman.
Hi, Elise Emanuel, 4809 Davenport Street, Omaha, 68132. I just want to say that I agree with what everyone here who spoke in opposition of this ordinance has already said. I also want to add that the language regarding possession of their personal property in this ordinance is vague. And when you think of animals, a lot of people who can't go to shelter can't do so because they have animals with them. Is the city going to store the animals for 30 days according to the ordinance? What happens there? So just some questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Melissa Schuman, followed by Sarah Hughes.
Hello, my name is Melissa Schuman. I had wrote something here. However, after hearing everybody, I'm going to do a little bit more of my lived experience. I urge you to vote no on ordinance 44395. Most of you have never faced the threat of losing your home, your job, or your safety net. But thousands of Omaha residents live with that reality every day. I have four kids. My youngest one is, excuse me, is 20, and he still lives with me because he cannot afford to live by himself. I can live off of $30,000 a year, and the only reason I can do that is because I bought my house 15 years ago, and it was affordable then. You couldn't do that today. My four kids can't survive on their own without some kind of resource out there. They can't. $30,000 a year is $14.75 an hour. I have a bachelor's degree in business management, yet I cannot use it anywhere. I cannot find a place that will hire me for more than $15, $16 an hour. Oh, McDonald's if I want to go for 18. However, somebody else had mentioned that you have to make three times your amount of monthly income to be housed. At $30,000 a year, that's $2,400 a month. That's $800 a month that you can afford, quote, for the, what would be there, three times. There's no place in Omaha you can get for $800 a month for a family, period. There's nowhere. There's no affordable housing here in my eyes. There's none. And we need affordable housing. We need affordable housing. I cannot stress enough how much that is needed. Criminalizing encampments doesn't solve homelessness, it hides it. This ordinance would punish people for being poor instead of helping them get housing, health care, and support they need. The $300 fine and the possibility of jail, jail time won't help anyone find housing, but using tax dollars to renovate old buildings and hotels could. Omaha deserves leadership that addresses root causes, not laws that swept the problem out of sight. Please reject ordinance 44395 and choose solutions that show compassion and real vision. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Sarah Hughes, followed by Liz Schuler. Schuler, probably. I'll get that right.
I'm Sarah Hughes. I live at 9466 Bedford Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, 68134. I'm going to start by just saying last Thursday about 3:00 PM, I got a call from my mom that was in her late, grandmother in her late 70s that became homeless that day, and I was unable to find her shelter within 90 miles of Omaha. So at the end of the day, when I got off work, I had to leave and leave her on the streets. So she would have been arrested if this ordinance would pass for not of a fault of her own. It was a fault of a family relationship ending. Her daughter was on low-income housing. She could not stay with her. If she was staying with someone on low-income housing, that could jeopardize her daughter and grandchildren's housing. So she proceeded to sleep on a porch that night. I did refer to Street Outreach. I'm sure they'll meet with her this week, but we are actively working on getting her in shelter. According to the 2024 Point in Time Count, 2,720 Nebraskans were homeless on January 24th, January 23rd, 2024. And in Omaha, 200, 301 were unsheltered, living outside in the harsh winter. That night, I was out there with many people in this room, like we do every last 10 days of January. It was in the lower 30s, and outreach teams were all over Nebraska, did the Point in Time Count. Research consistently shows that criminalizing homelessness does not reduce the number of people experiencing homelessness. Instead, it often makes the problem worse by pushing them further into poverty and instability. We all agree that we want to end homelessness, and we want Nebraskans to live safe in an affordable housing. But arresting and convicting them and finding someone for being homeless is not going to help that problem. It's going to make it worse. As a member of the Street Outreach team for over 10 years, I've watched people barely survive sleeping outside, and some were casualties to the elements. If not all, if not most, but all want a home to sleep into. They want to be in a house. But they have barriers beyond their control that leave them to sleep outside, in most times unsafe situations. Criminalizing sleeping outside will make... Criminalizing sleeping outside will make it more difficult to get housing, as a criminal background is a huge barrier to housing approvals and to get employment. And criminalizing homelessness will not end homelessness, it'll prolong it and add to a long list of barriers. These kind of laws traumatize unhoused individuals, they're dehumanizing, and they have a negative impact on their mental and physical health. These kind of laws are not effective in keeping our communities safe, and they are actually more disruptive. Criminalizing homelessness also increases recidivism, decreases trust in law enforcement, disrupts family stability, and otherwise enroats necessary safety nets that help end and prevent homelessness. Providing services is what is needed, and assessable, affordable housing has been proven to cost less than criminalizing homelessness, homelessness, and is much more effective. Once a person is out of corrections, they're still gonna be on the street, they're still gonna get fined and arrested again. Is that the cycle we're gonna see that we're already seeing? When will the cycle end? If they have no income and cannot pay the fine, will they have a warrant for their arrest? I think this is a lot of use, misuse of a lot of police time and taxpayers' money, and not a good use of resources. I would also divert-
Ma'am, your time is up. Thank you for being here today. Liz Schuler, Schuler, I don't know why he's, Liz Schuler. Liz, thanks for being here. Teresa Moore is to follow.
That's okay. Thank you. Good afternoon, council members. My name is Liz Schuler. I live at 8207 Franklin Street in Omaha, Nebraska, 68114. Just like Councilman Festerson, who represents me in District 1, I'm an Omaha native and proud Central graduate. So, go Eagles! I'm also a registered nurse, a professor of nursing, a mother, and a volunteer who has cared for people experiencing homelessness, both at the street or unsheltered level and in the shelters here in town. So I've seen homelessness and some of the issues that have caused it for folks, and that being homeless itself causes for folks. I'm also a mother who knows what it means to struggle. I was a teen, teen mother that bounced from place to place for over 18 months while my name was on the list for HUD housing here in the Omaha area as I pursued my undergraduate nursing degree. I took these two beautiful babies who I brought with me so they can learn a little bit about civic engagement from house to house of family members and friends while we were on that waitlist. That was 18 months. And then while we went through an appeal process to try to appeal us being rejected that housing due to my husband's misdemeanor criminal background, we were able to secure that housing, and that is the only way I successfully made it through my undergraduate nursing degree and then went on to graduate school and to do what I do in the community today. Excuse me. Today, that waitlist, if you ask folks working in the community, is greater than three years. I don't know if we would have made it greater than three years without resorting to sleeping on the street, as the shelters are often full. As I'm working with folks both in the shelters and on the street level of homelessness, I often hear some of the barriers to obtaining shelter that they face, even if they would prefer to be in the shelters we have in town. I hear things like they can't bring their service animals or pets, there's no beds, their family must be split up, couples must be separated, or they feel unsafe in the crowded environments with other folks who are also enduring great struggles. These are not excuses for not becoming sheltered, these are real barriers. This is why ordinance 44395 concerns me so deeply. Criminalizing homelessness does not solve the issue. It makes survival and finding future housing harder and shifts the burden onto taxpayers without creating solutions. We've talked already a lot about the price of incarcerating individuals today and where that money may be better spent in order to solve the root cause of the problem and help folks find stable housing. Meanwhile, Omaha faces a severe affordable housing crisis, as folks have talked about. The federal definition of affordable housing is spending about 30% of your income on housing and utilities. At minimum wage in Nebraska, now up to $1,350 an hour, folks make about $2,300 a month full-time gross. That would mean they would need to be able to secure housing with utilities for $690, $700 a month at that wage. There is nothing available. I checked Zillow this morning.
Thanks, your time is up. Thanks for being here today. Teresa Moore is next, followed by A.T. Miller.
I can't hear you. City council, thank you for listening to us and hearing us, and all I ask is that you really do see us and that you really do hear us today. Today, I not only get to work in homeless services, I too was homeless at one point in time. I remember going into a shelter, and I had my two boys, one on each hand, and getting turned away from the shelter because there was no beds, there was no family rooms available. To walk out of that shelter and have my boys crying and asking why they can't stay there, you know, that just breaks your heart. Today, I get to work to try to fix that. I get to work to house our homeless people, okay? We still face barriers, okay? People that going into jail, you put them in jail, they end up losing, they take all of their belongings. They come out of jail, the problem is still going to exist. They've lost their ID, they've lost their birth certificates, their social security cards, okay? We have to try to find, get all of that back, and then we get to go and apply for housing. We get turned away from housing because you have to make three times as much of the rent to pay for your housing. I don't even make that, you know? I know a lot of us, nobody wants to wait, nobody wakes up and, "Let's be homeless today." Nobody chooses that. We don't choose that. It happens, you know? Domestic violence, which was my situation, you know? There's a lot of that around here in Omaha. Our homeless people are people too. Being housed is a basic human right. Food is a basic human right. They are people too. Let's look at them, let's see them, have conversations with them, and let's look for a hand up and not kick them when they're down. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is A.T. Miller, and if I can ask, when you come up to speak, make sure you stay in front of those microphones, and I appreciate everybody listening attentively and doing a great job. We got a few more speakers left, but thank you, everybody. The floor is yours.
Thank you, council members. My name is A.T. Miller. I live at 1117 South 10th Street here in Omaha. I wanted to speak as, from the perspective of a family member. My mother's sister ended up homeless multiple times, and mainly due to her mental illness, severe schizophrenia. Her mental illness started because of severe postpartum depression after the birth of her fourth child, and our family spent many years looking for her, and as did her children, because she would periodically go off her medication and wander away from care. She had, you know, highly, we paid for highly beneficial private care, but her mental illness led to her noncooperation. Similarly, my brother, Stephen, currently receives care that costs over five figures every month. He's severely disabled. He hears and understands the rhetoric around this and feels very guilty that he is unable to work. He was employed by Challenge Industries, which is like Goodwill Industries, supported a work environment. He was unable to do that. He has severe scoliosis, he's deaf, as well as schizophrenic, and he is daily in fear of becoming homeless despite the care that he receives. He hears about, he receives both Medicare and Medicaid, which is typical of many disabled people, and when he hears about cuts to Medicaid, he becomes extremely anxious. His anxiety, stress exacerbates his illness, and it is very difficult as a family member. I visit him regularly. I'm one of the only family members visiting. He is over 60 years old, and people at that age who struggle with disabilities often have lost their parents, have lost family members, and while I don't mind being the celebrated brother, it pains me greatly that the other people in where he lives have no one visiting them, and so I end up being the brother to the 15 people who are housed where he lives. He is very well-cared-for. This is not a homeless shelter, but a supported living environment, but his fear and the, on the edge of the many people who are there, just as a family member, I support all the people here that are looking for the kinds of solutions that surround people like my brother and make it possible for them to have a stable life. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jeanette Taylor, followed by Natalie Nelson. Is Jeanette Taylor still here?
She is.
Thank you. The next speaker is Natalie Nelson, followed by Blanca Mejia. I was close.
Hello, my name is Natalie Nelson, pronouns she/her. I live in the Karen Western neighborhood at 4508 South 62nd Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, 68117. The city council member who represents my district is Ron Hug. I have a graduate, sorry.
You're doing great.
I want, I just first want to say thank you to all the speakers who have shared their personal experience. It's very touching and honored to hear them. I have a graduate degree in social work from UNO, and I'm currently a bilingual licensed independent mental health practitioner, providing services in South Omaha. Throughout my social work career, I have helped individuals and families apply for SNAP and other benefit programs, assisted community members experiencing domestic violence, and have volunteered or collaborated with agencies serving our homeless or food insecure neighbors. Completing research throughout my undergrad and my career experiences have led me to share that I strongly oppose this proposed ordinance. We don't need to criminalize, we don't need to criminalize unauthorized encampments in Omaha. We need to find alternative solutions that allow access to affordable housing or alternative housing, much like what many of the constituents have shared today. Online together, the organization shared that a monthly cost of incarceration is $3,000 per person. Alternatively, providing housing and services costs $1,375 per month per person. As a homeowner, a taxpayer, a social worker, a therapist, and a community member, I prefer that my taxes be used wisely to reflect my values in order to help not punish our unhoused neighbors. While discussing physical responsibility is important, even more important is the dignity and respect our homeless neighbors deserve. Again, they should not be punished when they are already experiencing hardship many of us never or we may never experience. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Blanca is followed by Jorcero Yamada? Yamada?
Blanca Mejia, 48, 4410 Encorn Miller Drive, Bellevue, Nebraska.
You say that so much better than I do. Thank you.
Don't worry about it. Okay. Have you ever seen this sign in our city? Right? What is the first thing that we think is, "He's a loser, he doesn't want to work." You know what? It's one or more of those. But you know what? If we know the story, if we really know the story, we know what is going on. Many of my partners here, people who work every single day, we read emails, we receive people in our offices, every single day, they are looking for life, I mean, for, for housing. I want you to make a favor for me. Tonight, when you go home, check it out everything around what you have, your family, a place, a warm place to live, right? Cold, heat, whatever you need, it's there. But can you imagine somebody who is, who has a job and they lost everything for any reason? They have a car accident, whatever, and they lost the opportunity? I represent a nonprofit organization that we help people in reentry, people that they going to be, that they have been incarcerated for any, for many reasons. I don't want to excuse nobody, but they, it's the situation, they are incarcerated, right? So when they're going to be released, sometimes they have fear to go out. Guess what? Because they don't going to have a housing, they're going to have a place to live because they don't have very good credit, they have the skills, but they don't have the rent, everything that you hear before. But I want to let you know that it is not easy. I know that we have a very beautiful, beautiful city, Omaha, right? I don't want to see this place like California, other places, but I know that we, if we work together, we can make a difference. Last year, we received funds, and it was very successful. We have people that they were released from jail and prison, and we asked them, "Can you prove that you, you want to work? Can you prove that you are looking for a job?" And you know what? I have a line in my office, people that they say, "Can you help me with a deposit? And can you help me at least with three weeks of transitional house?" The program was very successful, because, believe me, people want to have housing. So please, think about it. It's very, very easy, just sign and say, "I am in favor" or "I am against" of this. But before we make a, a decision, think before, because you know what? This is story-
Ma'am, your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
The next speaker is Joeturo Yamada, followed by Mary Royers.
Hi, I am Joeturo Yamada. I live on 3871 Farnham Street. Honorable councilors, I agree with the proponents that encampments are a problem and that we'd all like to see less of it. So today, I offer solutions, not criminalization. Now, the government is actually pretty good at subsidizing housing, that is, as long as it's for specific purposes. The two types of housing subsidies that we do well are jails and cars. I'll talk about jails and, and then parking cars in that order. In Nebraska jails, it costs the government about $11,000 a month to keep one inmate, which is more than what I pay for in rent. Of course, if we include the resources spent on law enforcement, criminal trials, it would be much, much more. Instead, I propose leaving aside the overburdened police, courts, and public defenders and use that money in more effective, in human ways, humane ways. Secondly, parking. Although seemingly unrelated, parking, like homelessness, is about occupying public space. Now, the city builds massive structures and reserve public spaces for private vehicles, but if a human is on the same public space, it is a crime. The most common parking violation costs just $16, yet if a human is on that same spot, the fine could be up to $300, time in prison, and every earthly possession taken. According to the 2026 city budget, the city will subsidize shelters for cars by $19 million. For homeless services, that number is $300,000, a mere 2% of the parking subsidy. So the solution, invest in the peoples and shelters. Take all the money that would cost the police prosecute and incarcerate the targeted people. Take all of that money and put it into other services. Second, subsidize human shelters more than car shelters. Charge more in high-demand parking spaces, garages, and fines. Redirect the funds towards housing. In closing, I want to be clear that I am not asking for any extra money from the budget. We already subsidize housing for convicts and private vehicles. At the end of the day, all I am asking for is to ask yourself this question. Could there be another solution for this problem? Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mary Royers, followed by Summer Lewis.
Hello, my name is Mary Royers. I've had my address requirement waived. I live in District 2. Please see the handout from the National Alliance to End Homelessness titled Criminalizing Homelessness Worsens the Crisis, research shows. I deeply believe that the way we treat our most vulnerable community members says something about the soul, the very heart of our community itself. This decision in front of us today is a test of what we're made of here in Omaha, a real indication of the heart or that, the lack thereof of our city leadership. I came here today because Councilmember Brinker Harding was quoted in the local news as saying, "I wanted to make sure that we're taking steps to make sure that the problem isn't a growing problem. I'm trying to get a win-win for those in the situation and the general public." I personally live and work in an area with a high population of individuals who are experiencing homelessness. They attend our community potlucks, they attend our block parties, and I've even had folks knock on my door asking for directions to visit a friend. They might not have homes, but they're absolutely my neighbors. My streets are not safer if we begin criminalizing their existence. My question for our council members today is this, are we going to address the issues that are causing homelessness, whether we're talking about low wages, increased unemployment, lack of affordable housing inventory, the lack of street support program funding for folks experiencing crisis, or are we going to punish the people for being the recipient- are we going to punish the people for being the recipients of the symptoms of those systemic problems? Councilmember Harding, destabilizing people who are already living in unstable conditions is not a win-win for Omaha. Slapping handcuffs on people who have nowhere else to sleep, rest, or live their lives is not a solution to a crisis. According to Jeffrey Selby, an Berkeley Law professor and faculty director of the Policy Advocacy Clinic, the criminalization of homelessness is shown time and time again by research to be both counterproductive and inhumane. Councilmember Harding, counterproductive and inhumane measures are not a win-win for Omaha. Jamie Chang, a specialist on the sociological health effects and, uh, health effects of homeless encampment suites, shared that there are harmful false narratives, that people are voluntarily homeless because they are refusing help, putting blame on individuals for systemic problems. Councilmember Harding, harmful false narratives are not a win-win for Omaha. A win-win for Omaha would be investing in Housing First initiatives. For every $1 invested in Housing First, a $1.44 cost savings comes in. So let's follow the research and not cruel trends. Let's lead the way in Omaha rather than falling behind. Morally, logically, and fiscally, Housing First rather than criminalization would be a win-win for Omaha. Councilmember Harding, we are in complete agreement in that sense. When you said you want to make sure we're taking steps to make sure the problem isn't growing, when you said you want a win-win for all of us, it's just not with handcuffs, it's with housing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Summer Lewis, followed by Sergio Toledo.
Good afternoon. My name is Summer Lewis and my address is 1411 North 104th Plaza. I'm speaking today to voice my strong opposition to Omaha City Ordinance 44395. This, this measure is, which seeks to ticket, fine, and arrest people experiencing homelessness for occupying public property with bedding or tents is unnecessary, counterproductive, and fundamentally cruel. People do not choose to be homeless. The punitive approach of this ordinance rests on the baseless stereotype that individuals experiencing homelessness have made poor choices and therefore should be punished. This ignores the reality that housing instability is often the result of limited choices and external catastrophic crises. I know this from personal experience. I am a person with lived experience of homelessness. Both my parents have struggled with substance use and housing instability my entire life. In the summer of 2022, at 27, I found myself homeless with only my car as my shelter. I was terrified, exhausted, and hungry. I felt completely lost and had nowhere, no idea where to start. I was angry, I was angry at my circumstances, I was angry at my parents, I was angry at myself. And I used to believe that my parents, their struggles and failures were a matter of choice and if they just tried harder, I had judged them. And it was only once I was in their shoes that I saw how naive and ignorant that was. Homelessness isn't a moral failing, it is a systemic failure. It's not a choice when society seems to be fighting against you. I had to let go of a lifetime of resentment and surrender to grace. It is through that grace I found the power to change my direction. My experience became my purpose. I am able to advocate for others today because I had the autonomy to make the best decisions for myself, access to the right resources, and the ability to build a safe, supportive environment. I now live a full life dedicated to walking with others through their darkest moments. My journey has led me to a network of local organizations and the dedicated, empathetic people within them. We are all united by the same purpose, providing services and support to those experiencing or at risk of homelessness. We are committed to loving our neighbors. We need your support. I urge you to please find it in your hearts to see that the local population of unhoused persons are just that, people deserving of grace and opportunity. We must recognize that Omaha will be better and stronger if everyone in our community has a safe place to live. We should-
Ma'am, your time has expired, your three minutes is up. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you so much.
Sergio Toledo, and then the next speaker after that is Alexis Schalberg. Is Sergio here? Next speaker is Alexis Schalberg. Okay, thank you. Speaker after that is Yvonne Kabura, followed by Lynn Mills.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Yvonne Kabura. I am here in the capacity of representing the Women's Center for Advancement. I am the Community Engagement Coordinator there. Our address is 3801 Harney Street, 68131. Housing is a barrier to many of our clients leaving abusive relationships. Nationwide, 38% of domestic violence survivors become homeless at some point in their lifetime. More than 90% of homeless women have experienced severe physical and sexual abuse at some point in their lives. Over 80% of survivors entering shelters identified, finding housing as, as a greatest need. In Omaha, it costs a Douglas County Corrections Facility $170 a day to incarcerate someone. Monthly, that is 51,000, sorry, 5100 a month, 61,200 a year. When we think about homelessness, we think about the assumptions that come with it, which some people today who have testified have mentioned. It includes people who are lazy, who have experienced drug use, mental health issues, but it also includes domestic violence survivors, includes veterans, and it also includes marginalized people. Criminalizing homelessness is not an answer. Many people with domestic violence, human trafficking, mental health issues will be swept off if this ordinance is passed, and I ask you today to, do not support this. It's not what our community needs, it's not what society needs, and we should be looking at ways to fund the already existing resources in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Lynn Mills, followed by Rosalind Rao.
Good afternoon. My name's Lynn Mills. I live at 3509 California Street. I'm here today to speak on my experience as a volunteer to, as an outreach group. We are a volunteer collective. We started in 2020. There was an encampment that someone we knew in our group lived next to and we got together. We spoke about what our desires were, to help and to try and provide basic human services, warm meals, a shelter, blanket, basic human needs. That was in 2020. It was a fairly large encampment at the time. We went in, we spoke to people, we developed relationships. There's trust that needs to happen, there's security that needs to happen. People living on the streets, you've heard this today in testimonies, people want security, they want safety, they want human dignity. We started providing once a week hot meals and basic, and basic needs. Medical supplies, basic over-the-counter supplies, basic tents, basic cooking supplies, and we never feared for our well-being. These people, we communicated with people within that community. They communicated to us to which parts, within 100 feet or so of tents that we should not go to. We did send some, a couple of people there just to check in. And our goal, and still our goal is today, is to provide a homemade meal. We feed between 30 to 50 people in, in a couple of hours. It goes, the food goes by very fast. We provide chairs to sit and to listen to people's stories. People's stories about how they came to be homeless, what they're feeling like now, the trauma that they're going through. People, they need people to hear them. We need our community to come together as one. We have, in our mayor's office, help right now, and our mayor is proposing more help. Let's see what we can do as a community to unite businesses, housing, homeowners. Homeless people are attacked verbally, assaulted by businesses and neighbors just for trying to survive and sleep at night. This is not the narrative that we want for Omaha. This is not what we, Omaha as a community, we are. We lend a helping hand to everyone. Let's use our resources that we have today.
Your time is up. Thank you for being here today. Rosalind Rao, followed by Luis Jimenez.
Hi, Roz Rao. I live at 517 South 86th Street. There's nothing I could say up here about the efficiency or efficacy of this ordinance that hasn't already been said by people with more facts than I have. At this point, I simply want to mention, I, I believe in my heart that this ordinance was brought forward with good intentions. And if we did not have a belief in the good faith of this committee, there would be no point in talking today. So that, that is why I'm here, because I believe in your good faith. But it has become obvious throughout the day how many people are speaking in opposition of this, this ordinance. And even the people speaking in, in support of this ordinance have been, they just haven't been very, oh. They, they have had their doubts, they have not been very committed in their support. So I wonder, if this does go through, if you do vote for this, how can you truly say you support and represent your constituents with this giant turnout today? If you do go ahead and vote for this ordinance, it has been obviously unsupported by your constituents. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Luis Jimenez, followed by Elahay Pearson.
Luis Jimenez, 279 Dewey Avenue. So I spoke with, with Ende Bosch, and he said that this ordinance defines public spaces. And he's also said that the city already has definition for public spaces, uh, public space. So this is another definition, and so that, that's the main reason why I oppose it because I think we all agree that public space is for conducting our daily business. So we want to be able to move through public space and then go home. Unfortunately, for many fold of reasons, people are homeless and it does not give them the right to occupy public space. So I, I think this ordinance is courageous. I think that maybe a resolution to have the discussion could have also done the same thing. But I am biased because I live on 27th and Dewey, and there's a lot of people moving through, going down to Hascom and going down 30th. And I've experienced violence, threat of violence, and I don't want that on anybody else. So while we want to have a solution for homelessness, we have to respect public space. Okay? And, uh, but I don't think you need another definition for, for public space. And so I, I, that's the main reason why I oppose it. There is, I've got three minutes. And yeah, that's, I mean, I'll just relate. One story is that I was hearing this noise at night, this heaving, eh, eh. And one time I heard it and I woke up, it's like this, I, I remember this noise, and I called the police. And it was a man going around this woman, and they were probably homeless. So there's a lot of crime that isn't being reported. And while we want to be civil, there is criminality that isn't being reported, and we have to address that. Thank you.
Thank you. Elahay Pearson, followed by Don Hooper.
Hello. My name is Elahay Pearson. I live at 12306 Farnham Street, 68154. I'm a master's student at UNO and I live pretty far out west, out in Mr. Harding's district. I don't personally know any unhoused people, but I've certainly seen them in my time in, in parks and on trails. And the fact of the matter is, a lot of people will be punished by this ordinance. It should be pretty clear, if you've been paying attention the last three hours, that criminalizing encampments is not supported by research, it doesn't solve anything, and quite frankly, I believe it's un-American. People have been camping in public in Nebraska for 15,000 years. It's a free country and it's public land. I believe that you think it makes you look strong to punish people who refuse what you think is good help. But punishing people who are stuck doesn't lead to anything but making the problem worse. Giving someone a fine doesn't make them better at paying rent. Giving someone a criminal record doesn't make them more likely to get a job. I visited a church last week. I don't think it was a particularly liberal church by a long shot, but they were discussing the kind of people Jesus would hang out with. I know some of you care about Jesus somewhat, and although I believe church and state should be separate, I would urge you to consider what someone of your faith should do. Should you spend thousands of tax dollars to keep someone in jail? Or should you feed them and give them transportation so that they can maintain a job? When I'm out there riding my bike or walking through a park and I see an encampment, I won't blame laziness. It's not like people necessarily want to be out there. I'll blame you instead for taking their money and giving them criminal records when they were just trying to survive. I want to point out the fact that not everyone who should be here is here today. This is a life or death topic, and you should consider whose lives are at risk. A gentleman from earlier, one of the proponents, mentioned a woman who died over the winter. Her name was Chrissy Gallagher-McMillan. I found out about her last week. And apparently last year she spoke about, she spoke out against exactly this kind of rule. Mr. Harding, I hope that you were deeply uncomfortable by our conversations that we've had here today, and I hope you change your mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Don Hooper, followed by Michael Fletcher.
Hello, my name is John Hooper. I live at 18308 Pasadena Avenue. I'm a retired educator. I work with my wife with a group of people called Like-Minded Friends, trying to save our democracy. I'm also married to that pissed-off grandma right back there. I would first give special thanks to all those who have shared their stories and to the individuals and the organizations that work with the homeless and are helping them. I'm in opposition to the ordinance that would criminalize homelessness, arrest and jail homeless. Omaha, we are better than this. A study and work needs to be done to find better alternatives than what we are presently planning to do. We are talking about men, women, children, and even families that need help. 25% of the homeless suffer mentally, and 25% are men and women who have served our country. Our veterans deserve much better. These individuals don't want to be homeless and living on the streets the way they are. They need understanding, a helping hand, support, and love. Warnings, fining, arresting, or jailing homeless is not the answer, just the opposite. These individuals need a means, these individuals don't have the means to pay a fine or get legal representation. They will be put in a population of people none of us want to be with, and they don't have a way of defending themselves or protecting themselves. We don't have the facilities now to do this. Our jails and prisons are overcrowded. This is a very expensive venture for the city and for the state. Instead, let's allocate funds and provide services and resources to help them to be able to help themselves. Let's put Omaha on a map as an example of others to follow. Show other ways and means to help the homeless get back on their feet and recover. We need to get ahead of this because you and I know, if we don't act now and act quickly, these numbers are only going to grow with the present administration is doing to America. Many in America are just a paycheck away from being homeless. Please do- Please do the right thing and help the homeless and don't arrest them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Michael Fletcher, followed by Anthony Karifa Rogers Wright. Thank you. Speaker after Anthony is Anna Preston.
Can I ask a quick question, Mr. President, regarding giving our addresses before we commence? Given the political climate of our country right now, some of us have been receiving threats from white supremacist terrorists. So I'm wondering, given that my address is on the sheet, if I do not give it online?
Madam Clerk.
To do an address waiver, it had to be approved prior to the meeting.
Okay. I'm just trying to prevent, because if any of them come to my house, like, the cops are gonna have to come clean them up. But anyway, Anthony Karifa Rogers Wright, 3010 Lincoln Boulevard, Omaha, Nebraska, 68131. So friends, we've heard enough data from my fellow comrades that point to why this ordinance is written as simply bad policy and written by someone who is clearly using this estima body, which exists as a body to serve the people, as a campaign advertisement to serve its own political self-interest. But let's talk more about why this ordinance is written is so languorous and sophomoric. First, it gives the option for houseless folk to be transported to a shelter when we know and have known that shelters throughout Douglas County are maxed out and bereft of the requisite capacity to assist the city's growing houseless population. Councilmember Harding either knew this and is exercising willful ignorance regardless, or he is completely uninformed, which is disqualifying as a city, sitting council member, and certainly for anyone with aspirations for higher federal office. Saying that someone has the option to be transported to shelters that don't have the capacity to help them is as feckless as designating a political ideology like anti-fascism as a domestic terrorist organization. It is equally disingenuous to believe that you can rely on nonprofits to clean up your shortcomings as public servants when Mr. Harding's political party in DC right now is in the process of McCarthy-era witch hunts against numerous nonprofit organizations with the goal of stripping them of their C3 status. Week after week, we watch this body handing out tax increment financing to capitalist developers like candy with no strings attached, no conditions for serving the greater good of the public interest in exchange for a flat tax, flat tax rate for 10 to 15 years, which costs the people in our city revenue that could be used for social services that could actually assist houseless folk. This was even pointed out by State Auditor Foley, who admonished the previous city council about its profligate misuse of tax increment financing. You could make these developers build and dedicate portions of their developments to low and moderate income households in exchange for dodging taxes for a decade or more. It's flummishing that this ordinance was introduced at a time when there is an empty, brand-new juvenile detention facility that sits empty and costs us $20,000 a month. The message that Councilmember Harding has sent to the people of Omaha is that he would rather criminalize poverty than find ways to use that empty building as a short-term option to assist houseless folk. Finally, given that the mayor has all but said that he would veto this bill if it passes, and I doubt you would get the requisite five votes to override his veto, this is not a vote as much as it is a pronouncement of your morality. Jewish people of conscience like myself refer to this time on our calendar as the days of awe when we seek atonement. I hope that any of you who plan to vote for this adulteration of people-centered human rights have asked for atonement prior to your vote, because you're gonna need it big time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Anna Preston, followed by Paul Weisapple. Is Ms. Anna Preston here? Next speaker is Paul Weisapple, followed by Gab Reema.
Hi, City Council. It's good to see you guys, as usual. My name is Paul Weisapple. Address 6612 Lake Street, 68104. I've dedicated my entire life to preventing overdose. And at the College of Public Health, I've been tasked with trying to figure out what's gonna cause overdoses and what's gonna stop overdoses. And I'm just gonna share some stark facts with you real quick. Those who are unhoused are nine times more likely to die of overdoses just by being unhoused. But once you incarcerate them, they're 129 times more likely to die of an overdose once they leave jail. Anyone who's ever been incarcerated is 40 times more likely to die of an overdose than the regular general population. And forced treatment actually causes two times the overdose rate as the normal general population. Nebraska spent $660 million on incarceration last year and only $228 million on housing individuals. I buried 96 friends, all of them who have experienced incarceration. And I've experienced incarceration. I can tell you that it's one of the hardest parts to even escape in the first place. Once you go in and you leave with your tiny little bag of stuff, trying to get out on your feet, trying to find a nonprofit that'll take, take you in, trying to figure out which one of your families got your cell phone, it's one of the hardest things to escape. I'm not saying that this isn't something that we all think about. I grew up on Leavenworth Street and have seen the same guy with a shopping cart every day for 10 years and wish him to find his way out of it. But without the stabilization of the nonprofits and the funding that we need to prevent this stuff, this is really going nowhere and making the issue worse. I really appreciate you guys for your time and have a nice time.
Thanks, Paul. Next speaker is Gab Reema, followed by Samantha Earliss.
Good afternoon, Council. My name is Gab Reema. I've had my address requirement waived, but I reside in District Four. Everyone here agrees on one thing, which is that homelessness is a problem in Omaha. What some of us disagree on is how we address that problem. A survey put out by the nonpartisan organization Poll of Vote shows that 75% of all survey participants oppose this measure. And even when you break that data down by party lines and by council district, there is no group that overwhelmingly supports this measure. This proposed ordinance completely misses the mark when it comes to compassionate and sensible solutions. According to a 2025 report from the National Alliance to End Homelessness, which I've emailed to all of you along with some other resources, they state that there is no fault, that there is a false narrative that people choose voluntary homelessness. Nationwide, there is a shortage of 200,000 year-round shelter beds for adults, and nearly 80% of communities have a bed shortage. The cost of living in Omaha is going up, and with the recent passing of certain national legislation that would further restrict access to services like SNAP and Medicaid, we are looking at a potential increase in economic inequality in our city. My neighbors experiencing homelessness are also your constituents. They are people who have been failed by people and by systems. They are people who deserve compassion, not criminalization. This proposed ordinance does nothing to address the root causes of homelessness. It does nothing to address cost of living, a lack of affordable housing, mental health care needs, unemployment, substance abuse. It contributes to the cycle of poverty. I have worked in the customer service industry in the downtown area for the last six years. Homeless residents of Omaha are my regular customers. I speak with them every day. Many of them have jobs, which they won't be able to keep if they're asked to spend 30 days in jail. Many of them tell me that they don't feel safe in shelters, and they actually feel safer sleeping on the sidewalk. Many of them tell me about how they try to go to shelters and get turned away. This tells me that we have bigger problems to address. How can we make our shelters safer? How can we make our spaces more welcoming? How can we utilize compassionate tactics such as Housing First to address this issue? It's important to me that we treat homelessness as an issue without treating homeless people as an issue. I ask that you vote no to this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, no applause. Thank you. We've been doing great. Thank you. Samantha Earliss, followed by Gloria Becker Ryle.
Hi, my name is Sam Earliss. I live at 2211 Howard Street. I am newly a resident of the Park East neighborhood since February of this year and a healthcare provider in Omaha and Bellevue since July of 2022. I strongly oppose the proposal to penalize unauthorized encampments in Omaha. Three years of residency in Bellevue and Omaha is a short period of time compared to many born and raised here, but I can assure this council that the intimate experience of frequently serving our unhoused populations in the hospital and sharing neighborhoods with them qualifies my ability to testify the ordinance being discussed today. As someone who enjoys frequently walking these downtown streets and passing my neighbors, applying an ordinance to a population that is in need of the city's help is a huge step in the wrong direction. Like many people have proposed, with cases of homelessness rising, our city should be focusing on addressing the causes of homelessness through affordable housing initiatives and support services. It is because of organizations like North Omaha Community Partnership and Metro Housing Collaborative that the residents of City View Apartments got the assistance they needed when they were ordered to vacate June of this year due to unsafe conditions of the building. If you have not already, please put trust, respect, and real support into these organizations that have the pleasure of working closely with our neighbors who see their needs much clearer than the rest of us do. Rehousing is one of the most stressful circumstances any person can experience, even for privileged folks like myself who have never had to truly fear living without appropriate shelter. Let's imagine ourselves in between homes, finding community only amongst others, living that same struggle, and being sent to jail under circumstances that already feel impossible to escape. Every single one of us feels the change in climate, especially over the past few years, the scorching heat, the frigid cold, the countless thunderstorms. That means we all know the relief, or hopefully we all know the relief, of stepping into air conditioning on those 100-degree days, the comfort of a warm home during our bitter winters, and stepping into a building to escape the unrelenting rain. Criminalizing homelessness would be a failure of this council and community, a failure of the privileged and the housed, a failure of we, the people, that have the abilities and influence to help others. As stated in this ordinance, the intention to promote public, environmental, and economic health, safety, and general welfare is not accomplished through punishment and intimidation. The threat of arrest and fining is not in the best interests of the city, its first responders, or anybody that calls themselves neighbor. Jail is not appropriate housing. Finding a person $300 that they would need towards affordable housing, if even available, is not supportive to anybody. Please do not pass this ordinance that will undoubtedly exacerbate the pain, struggle, and fear that our unhoused neighbors already experience every single day. And if the folks that are still here that shared their, their stories that have lived through homelessness, thank you so much for sharing your stories.
Your time is up. Thank you for being here today. Gloria Becker Ryle, followed by Darian Talkington. She's gone. Okay, thank you. Darian Talkington. Rachel Parker. Jill Lynch Sosa. Followed by Erica Musgrove.
Hello. Thank you guys for hanging in there while we have all of us talking so much. My name is Jill Lynch Sosa, and I'm the Executive Director for the Society of St. Vincent de Paul. That address is 1715 Isard Street, down here in North Omaha. My personal address is 14881 Ellison Circle in Omaha, 68116. So a lot of things have already been said. I'm not gonna go there. But I know part of the reason that Congressman Harding brought this forward is because you heard from lots of people that aren't here today. I understand that. And they have some legitimate concerns. They're concerns that many of us have as well. People are worried about sanitation, about human waste in public areas, trash, and not being comfortable seeing people encampments on the, on the sidewalks, what have you. And those are all valid concerns. Totally agree. No community wants to see suffering in their streets. We want to have that illusion of a beautiful, everybody's happy place. I get that. But the truth is that these are symptoms. They're not causes. They're not the result of people choosing to be dirty or disruptive. They're the result of people not having access to basic human needs. Bathrooms, we see it all the time. They have no access to bathrooms. Trash bins, they don't want that trash all around them either, but there's nowhere to put it. And, you know, as a person, you know, in my neighborhood, I don't want people filling up my trash bin with their trash. So what do they do with it? Showers, they don't have access to showers unless they're in a shelter. And you've already heard of the reasons why people are not in shelters. And they just want a safe place to sleep. So when we respond by criminalizing the act of homelessness, or the person, however you want to call it, by ticketing, by arresting, by sweeping people from one place to another, we don't solve the problem. We're just pushing it around. Los Angeles, in Los Angeles, there's research from UCLA, Luskin's Institute on Inequity and Democracy from 2019 that found encampment sweeps often destroyed tents, documents, and medications. We already talked about that, but it did nothing to reduce homelessness. Instead, it just scattered people into new neighborhoods, spreading the issues of sanitation, there are all these other things, more widely spread out. In Denver, the University of Denver study in 2019 showed that the city's campaign ban did not reduce unsheltered homelessness. Instead, it displaced people into riverbeds, wooded areas, where the sanitation and the outreach was much more difficult.
Ma'am, your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Erica Musgrove, followed by Carmel Sudo.
My name is Erica Musgrove. I stay at Stevens Center, 2723 Q Street. I am 29 years old. I am a human sex traffic survivor. And due to the cause of being homeless and the shelters being at full capacity, I have, for most of my pregnancy, been homeless. I am eight and a half months pregnant. And due to them not, Omaha, Nebraska, not having the resources that they really need, how they're so quick to pass a judge for a liquor license, but throw a homeless man in jail and even in prison just, just to survive is highly disgusting and inhumane. And Omaha, Nebraska should be very ashamed of themselves. I have had to go through very inhumane circumstances, living in shelters, and have unforgivable acts done towards me due to homelessness and Nebraska not stepping up and providing more safe, cleaner, nicer shelters, but they want to build a multimillion-dollar building. They want to talk all this bad stuff on encampments, but they're not necessarily trying to help those people out either. They're judgmental, very disrespectful, and that's all I gotta say.
Thank you. Carmel Sudo is the next speaker, followed by Ariel Nichols.
I can speak up loud if you need me to. Hi, everybody. Lightenize it. This ain't about the regular world. Okay, my name is Carmel Sudditt, AKA Matt. That is my nickname. I, I just want to reiterate, I guess, what other people said. I do believe you guys made this background, you know, maybe with garbages and things like that. I know it's unsightly. It's unsightly to me, and I'm, I'm unhoused, kind of by choice. But, uh, you know, I, we're, we are your family members, you know? I just want you to see us as human. There, there's a lot of mental illness that I see. I'm seeing things that I never thought that I would see since I've been here. I'm from Iowa. And, uh, and I've seen quite, quite a few things, but I do know those, those of us that, that are capable, you know, I can see, you know, us finding our way. Thanks to, to Mayor at the Mayor's Office and Lily and Jill from SVDP. You know, I, I'm able to, you know, my stuff got, you know, through. But if I didn't have the mental, you know, capabilities to do that, you know, what about me? And, you know, I feel like, you know, too much is given, much is required. And you guys are in that position to, you know, if not for the grace of God, there go I, you know, just that fast. It can be you. I've seen extremely intelligent individuals at this place that just, you know, one bad decision or one bad choice or just not enough money has them outside. You know, I, you know, my address, by the way, is 1111 Living Free Lane. That's how I feel about it, you know? You know, I'm free, but I won't be free if, if you That's how I feel about it, you know, because I'm free, but I won't be free if you put me in jail. That's not, that tears me up inside. That does cause a lot of anxiety, you know, to be criminalized. Just campgrounds, garbage, you know, for us, also accountability, not criminality. You know, once we get to, you know, you get, there's too much land around us that we put our camps on, but we, you know, there's some things we have to be accountable for and do some of the work, you know, make us meet with outreach people when they come, if we do get to be put on a campground, that within 30 days, we have to meet with the outreach workers, the street workers, you know, something. I don't know, nobody has the answer. I get that, but this certainly, this ain't that, putting us in jail or them fines. Them fines will never get paid. I'm just saying, this is not going to happen. You know, if I got a choice between rent or the fine, I'm going to pay the rent, and I'm going to keep that riff over my head. Thank you for your time. It's probably almost over. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ariel Nichols. Okay, thank you. Next speaker, Melissa Nguyenfeld. Nguyenfeld, try that again. Melissa Nguyenfeld, followed by Anetta Rodarte.
Good evening. My name's Melissa Nguyenfeld. My address is 540 North 77th Circle, Omaha, Nebraska. I'm a registered nurse and the Chief Operating Officer for Heal Omaha. I've been a nurse for 28 years, providing nursing care to my unsheltered neighbors for the last 10 years. At Heal Omaha, we provide high-quality health care directly to where our patients are dwelling. We envision a community where health is maximized, dignity is honored, and homelessness is brief, rare, and nonrecurring. I wanted to talk a little bit about the way that our organization serves our unsheltered neighbors. We go, as I mentioned, to where our patients dwell. We work in close alignment with the street outreach team. We currently operate, I am the only paid employee of Heal Omaha, and we have 67 volunteers who are physicians, nurses, among our physician group are psychiatrists, and we have social workers, mental health therapists, a psychologist, and also unlicensed professionals who also just come and carry heavy things and watch our backs. We also work very closely with University of Nebraska Medical Center students and also Creighton University Medical Students as part of our team as well. So, we're 67 volunteers and me. And what we know, what I know as a nurse, is that being unsheltered is extremely unhealthy. It is very hard on people's health. Being homeless in general increases your risk of mortality six times, or three times, but being unsheltered increases your mortality risk three times. So, if we can eliminate a barrier to shelter care, and those barriers that have been mentioned by other people who've testified today, we can cut a person's risk of mortality in half. So, we want, so we can provide medications, we can advocate with shelter staff, and help people to make human connections by going out and sitting with people. Again, our organization is not currently at adequate capacity to meet the needs of people who are unsheltered in our community, so that is an opportunity. I think that the alternative solution that's been proposed by Threshold is very exciting to me. I am looking forward to working with other leaders in the homeless service system to come up with innovative solutions, and I'm looking forward to bringing my ability to recruit and train volunteers to serve this population as a potential resource. There's a lot of people in our community who want to help, and I think that we can capitalize on that resource.
Ma'am, your time is up.
Thank you so much.
Thanks. Thank you for being here today. Next speaker is Anetta Rodarte. Is Anetta here? Speaker Andrew Allman. Ted Potter. Is Ted Potter here? Ted, come on down. Following Ted is Ms. Ella Willis.
Ted Potter, 2963 and 1/2 Pacific Street. Yeah, everybody's pretty much said everything. I will add, from the perspective of a person that's just working a job, maybe struggling a little bit, rent's really high, and it sounds like you guys are saying, if you lose your job, you go to jail. Cool.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ryan Nichols. Ryan Nichol. Tamara Dwyer, followed by J.C. Chalte.
Hello, Tamara Dwyer. My address is 9308 Polk Street. I also work in the City of Omaha Mayor's Office. I have a lot of information that I gathered up to talk to you all today about this proposed ordinance. Sorry, can you hear me? Okay. A lot of people that were here today shared with you a lot of things that I have shared with many of you over the years that I've been here. I know that you've heard these things before because I've showed you these things, statistics, studies, all of that. I've worked here in the Mayor's Office as the Homeless Services Coordinator for about three years now. I've worked in homeless services for about 12 years. I'm a licensed clinical social worker in Nebraska. I'm a board member of the Nebraska National Association of Social Workers. I have lived experience in homelessness and housing instability. We know that homelessness is a deeply complex issue. You know, everyone wants solutions. We want solutions. You know, the people that are doing the work, we want solutions too. We want solutions to not have to see our neighbors and friends on the street every single day. But the ordinance doesn't solve that problem. It, you know, moves it out of sight, focuses on enforcement and removal, risks criminalizing our neighbors for the circumstances of poverty rather than addressing causes that are more deep than just that. We, somebody talked about the 2025 point-in-time count, you know. Overall, we saw 6% reduction in our unsheltered numbers, we saw 14% reduction. I think that that speaks to the work that has been done over the past few years with many service providers without additional resources. It was very hard, you know, to get to that point, to see those reductions. We haven't seen them in many years. I think being able, or passing an ordinance like this is very disrespectful to the people doing the work. Telling them, you know, that the successes that they have seen doesn't really matter to you all. We know that the data shows that the system is working. Somebody from Outreach already shared, you know, that Street Outreach was able to house 443 people directly from the streets into housing in 2024 alone. We know that housing with services works for people. We do it every single day, and we have the data to prove it. We need to also acknowledge the human cost.
Your time is up. Thanks, Tamara.
Thank you.
J.C. Chatley, is J.C. here? The next speaker after J.C., if I got your name right. Okay. Alexander Liu, is Alexander here? Followed by Deborah McKnight. Is Deborah here? You're up in the bullpen. One more, one more.
Sorry, it's been long enough she fell asleep. Okay, so, hi, my name is Alexander Liu. I'm at 9505 South 27th Street in Bellevue, and there's been a lot of negative focus on and rhetoric blaming mental health illnesses and addiction. So, I'm just curious, is this not targeting other kinds of disabled people too? So, like, I have a benign brain tumor that's damaging my optic nerve, and I'm just low vision right now, but I'll be fully blind eventually. So, in your medical opinion, Councilman Harding, is that going to count as a mental or physical disability? But the NIH states that nearly 50% of people experiencing homelessness have a disability, which is 2.5 times higher than the able population. And people aren't unhoused because they want to be, it's just because they don't have enough care, support, and social safety nets for, you know, that are reaching people that need it the most. And there are always going to be people, usually, who are like me, who are disabled, because we like to target people, you know, who are going to be more marginalized and aren't receiving the social services that they need the most. Now, I'm fairly privileged in that I actually have housing, but a lot of us don't, and it's very unfortunate. But this enforcement will actually cost taxpayers annually $37,000 per enforcement per homeless person, which would be, which instead, if we were providing supportive housing, would only cost $12,000 per person annually. Now, as a reminder, anybody can become disabled, which is meaning, like, if you just get, like, one illness, or like, one bad car accident, or miss a couple paychecks, anybody can fall into that category. And that means that this, you know, Councilman Harding's congressional publicity stunt would then be enforced on you, or on me, or on the people that you love, which, again, would suck. So, I also wanted to mention, and I think she left, but the person that had mentioned that the shelter turned away somebody with a service dog, that is blatantly illegal, and that violates federal law and ADA, and that killed a person, because that dog would have been considered medical equipment, and, again, very illegal, and it should not be happening, because you cannot legally kick somebody out of a shelter because they have a wheelchair or a cane, so you should not be able to kick somebody out because they have a service dog that they need medically. But yeah, thank you very much, and I have a bunch of sources, so if you guys would like that, I'd be interested in getting that, if anybody even wants it.
Thank you. Next speaker is Deborah McKnight, followed by Kyra Britt.
Hi, my name is Deborah McKnight. I've had my address waived in advance. My work address is Urban Abbey, 1026 Jackson Street in the Old Market. I'm the founding pastor at Urban Abbey, a United Methodist Coffee Shop Bookstore Church in the heart of the Old Market, and I would urge you to vote against this ordinance. I believe it doesn't reflect the best of the voices of experts or the deep needs of our community. I have seen firsthand the growing struggle with our neighbors experiencing homelessness. Urban Abbey will be 14 years old this November, and every year, there are more and more folks, growing numbers of folks sleeping alongside nooks in buildings and spaces where they can find just a little bit of shelter. And this is not camping, I don't think. And if there is anyone at fault, if it is criminal at all, it is not the folks stuck in this situation, it is us. It is you and I and all of us responsible in allowing folks to be exposed so brutally to the elements not cared for by our community. The crime is that we allow this to persist, that we have a staggering number of resources and opportunities at our disposal that we could deploy if we choose. And I believe in us being able to do that. The people that I know who are experiencing homelessness in the Old Market come from all kinds of walks of life. Many of them work one, two, and even three jobs, and all of them are people like you and I who have fallen on hard times, and all of us are much closer to becoming someone experiencing homelessness than we are to becoming Warren Buffett. We must act in a way that, of compassion and care, that brings affordable housing and service for the community around us, for the betterment of our future. I've also been the Chair of the PTO at Liberty Elementary School, which is right across the street from the Omaha Children's Museum, and it experiences firsthand the number of children who are sent out of their housing, have unstable housing, are sent away, who lived in the City View Apartments and struggle. And so, this impacts people that we work with at the Abbey in so many different ways and so many different places, and I just hope we can do something that is built out of compassion and love and justice.
Thank you. Kyra Britt is the next speaker, followed by Daniel Cook, followed by Grace Sullivan.
Hello, City Council. My name is Kyra Britt. I had my address waived. I'm a lifelong resident of Omaha, and I strongly urge you to vote no on ordinance 44395. Many arguments for this ordinance stem from concerns about public safety. Firstly, I ask you all to think critically about how many of these concerns are genuine safety issues, and how many are more reflective of wealthier people's discomfort with having to see and interact with unhoused folks. I will recognize that some people may have valid safety concerns, but this ordinance will not do anything to improve public safety. If someone is camping outdoors, camping, it probably means they don't feel safe or welcome at one of Omaha's shelters. It also means they probably won't be able to afford paying a fine, which you already know, Councilman Harding, sorry, which leaves incarceration as the only other option. But without providing unhoused folks real supportive services and a path toward a more permanent solution, there's no reasonable expectation for them to stop sleeping outdoors once they're released from jail. And then we're back at the beginning, only this time, our unhoused neighbor is more traumatized than before. A much stronger solution to this issue is to address the root causes of homelessness in Omaha. We need to be providing permanent supportive housing, affordable and easy-to-access, mental and physical health care, and other supportive services that prevent people from having to lose their homes and jobs in the first place. According to Together Omaha, it costs the city about $3,000 to jail someone for one month, although an earlier speaker said $5,000, so maybe $3,000 is on the lower end. Data collected in January of this year counted over 1,600 unhoused people living in Omaha. Of course, this is a big undercount, but if this ordinance passes, and let's say some 1,600 people are incarcerated for not being able to pay a fine, this would cost the city over $4.8 million. On the other hand, it would only cost Omaha about $1,400 a month, maybe, to provide housing and supportive services to our unhoused neighbors, which is less than half of the cost to jail them. This ordinance wastes millions of dollars to harass and traumatize our unhoused neighbors while doing absolutely nothing to address the main causes of homelessness. The City of Omaha's own Human Rights and Relations Board said the ordinance is, quote, "a short-term solution that will only make matters worse." Wanting to criminalize unhoused folks like this is cruel and counterproductive, and it shows how deeply out of touch some of you are with reality. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Daniel Cook, followed by Grace Sullivan, and then Clarice Dobek.
Good afternoon, City Council. My name's Daniel Cook, and I've had my address waived. Today, like almost everyone else here, I just wanted to talk about this disgusting bill proposed by Councilman Harding. When I heard about this bill, I was put in utter shock, because why would anyone ever think of criminalizing homelessness after what we saw in DC? This bill is vile, disgusting, and quite frankly, kind of evil, and it doesn't address the issue of homelessness in Omaha. In a quote from the Flat Water Free Press in an article posted earlier this year, "Since 2013, the unsheltered homeless population grew faster in the Omaha Council Bluffs area than any other major metro in the country." Meanwhile, it added some of the fewest housing options for people facing homelessness. City officials said a shortage in places for people to go is one of the factors driving the increase of homelessness. the increase of homelessness. So why aren't we making new shelters? Many of the homeless communities don't even want to go to our current ones, either because it would separate them from their families, or some can't go because of their sexuality. We do need to have more inclusive shelters that can hold people like that, and even some of their pets, too. On the Steve Omaha's website, they have six shelters listed. Kansas City, which is a bigger city, but they have 27 different shelters. That includes family shelters and LGBTQ shelters. Des Moines also offers eviction support, family support, and rental assistance as well. In the bill, it says that they will get offered a chance to go to a shelter before they get arrested, but what if they don't want to go to one? That is their right to not go to one. And the definition of camp paraphernalia, you guys have bedding materials. Does this include blankets and sleeping bags as well? Because it is getting colder at night. And arresting people just because they're a little cold does not seem like a great idea. In an article posted by WOWT, Mr. Harding said, "Bottom line, to make sure that people who are involved in those situations are getting the help they deserve." How are they getting help? By getting arrested and racking up fines. Council members, I urge you to think about what all these people have said today, and think about how we can do better, because this bill is not doing better. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Grace Sullivan, followed by Clarice Dombek.
Okay. Good evening, council members. My name's Grace Sullivan. My address is 3705 Davenport Street, apartment 305, Omaha, Nebraska, 68131. I'm a medical student at UNMC, so I spend my days studying, and during the weekends, I spend my days volunteering Heal Omaha, providing medical care to people living on the street. And I have a focus on underserved healthcare. So as a student doctor, I'm taught to be evidence-driven, and the evidence on this is quite clear, that the criminalization of homelessness leads to worse health outcomes, it leads to wasted resources, and it destabilizes communities. The Johns Hopkins Judicial Health Note on the Grants, on the Grants Pass v. Johnson, found strong evidence that displacement disrupts access to healthcare, medications, and outreach resources, which leads to worsening chronic illnesses and mental health. People experiencing homelessness already face a threefold higher risk of mortality compared to the general population. So citations and sweeps of encampments is only going to push people into more dangerous areas, and this is only going to cause an increase in disease. So as someone in healthcare, this is deeply concerning, and it's impossible to ignore that this ordinance will directly worsen the healthcare of these individuals. It's all, like ethics aside, it's just going to be a waste of resources. The National Alliance to End Homelessness reports that enforcement is enormously expensive. If we want to look at historical cases, San Francisco spent $20.6 million on criminalization, only to find that it had no effect, and it was too expensive to continue. On the other hand, Denver's supportive housing initiative costs $12,000 per person per year, but that cost was offset by $7,000 due to reduction in jail, court, and hospital expenses. So if the council wishes to be fiscally responsible, criminalization is not the correct path. It also does nothing to address the root issue, it only perpetuates the cycle of homelessness. Working with the homeless population, before, I had no idea the extent of the barriers that are put in place for homeless people to even get the things that they need to get housed or get a job. Imagine someone with a disability who can barely walk, it's the dead of winter, they can barely make it to the bus stop, to get to the office, to get to their appointment, to get their social security card, to get housed. So this ordinance is just going to place another huge barrier on these people who are already struggling to get their footing. It provides no foundation for success, it only pulls the rug out from underneath these individuals. One study shows that legal debt actually prolongs homelessness by two years. Council members, if there was a physician that was performing treatments or operations that were harmful and proven to be ineffective time and time again, that physician would lose their medical license. So I urge you all to reject this ordinance in the name of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Clarice Dombek, followed by Anna Hernandez.
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Clarice Dombek. I reside at 901 Farnham Street. I'm here today representing the Redress Movement. We're an organization that works in three municipalities, four municipalities across the country to redress racial segregation in housing. And before I get to what I had prepared to say today, I just want to say, wow, 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 we have an incredible amount of work to do. And just hearing everyone that came today, seeing all the organizations that sent representatives, those are the folks that can do this work. And we can do it collectively, to actually be able to address these issues. And those are the folks that we need to be organizing and mobilizing so we can actually get this done. So we encourage you to reject this misguided ordinance and focus our city resources on providing basic dignity to unhoused people through permanent supportive housing, rather than wasting money on policing encampments and jail beds. Everyone deserves a safe place to lay their head, regardless of race, zip code, or background. But in Omaha, you need $20 an hour to afford a one-bedroom apartment, and $24 an hour to afford a two-bedroom apartment. There is an extreme shortage of affordable housing and available rental homes for lower-income households. I came last week, and I spoke about that, too. And I also spoke about how that $40 million housing bond will be a good opportunity to be able to fill that need. I believe the Housing Action and Affordability Plan, the market rate analysis they did, said that there's 7,000, there's a need for 7,000 units that serve households with incomes at 50% and below AMI. So again, I think it's time that we use the resources that we have available now to start addressing these issues. Increasing criminalization does nothing to solve this underlying math problem for the 65,000-plus cost burden households in our city. Instead, it will increase racial disparities and exacerbate mass incarceration. Just to provide you an example, African-Americans only make up 7.5% of the three-county area served by threshold continuum of care, but 27.3% of the unhoused people at the 2024 point-in-time count. This means that black people will be nearly four times more likely to face the harassment, fines, and incarceration proposed by this ordinance. And I know that I'm running short on time, so I'm going to skip the rest of what I had to say, because I know all the council members received this same information in an email. So rather than wasting time and wasting money blaming and punishing individuals for structural economic problems, the City of Omaha should focus its resources on the most dignified and efficient solution to prevent homelessness, and that's permanent supportive housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anna Hernandez is the next speaker, followed by Gwen Euster. And then Connie Jones. And the last speaker after Connie Jones is Porter Moore.
Good evening, honorable City Council people. My name's Anna Hernandez. My address is 1266 Augusta Avenue. My office is down in South Omaha, in the Old City Hall. I come here tonight in the capacity as Vice President of SONA, South Omaha Neighborhood Alliance. We have more than 40 neighborhood associations and alliances that we work in tandem with to promote everyone in South Omaha. That includes our housed and unhoused. We ask, our leadership asks, that you vote against this. So I ask in the capacity of Vice President to vote against this. In the capacity of a private citizen, I would like to bring up legalities. Having worked in South Omaha, there's always been the question of, when it comes to events, especially events on 24th Street, the delineation between private property and public property on 24th Street. I'm glad that Mr. Van den Bosch is here today, because he was working on that issue, I remember, about two years ago to three years ago. So the question at hand is, what is considered legal property, and what is considered public property? Because I've gone down 24th Street many a time, and I see homeless people, unhoused people, that are in certain crevices of businesses or what have you. So that is a question I have at hand. Has that question been resolved, what is considered public and what is considered private? Because I know it was a special situation on South 24th Street, the delineation between public and private property. Thank you, and I hope that you vote against this.
Thank you. Next speaker, Gwen Euster. Is Gwen here?
No, she went to the other side.
Okay. We'll skip to Porter Moore, and then hopefully she comes back. Is Porter here?
My name is Porter Moore. My addresses are 4809 Davenport Street and 1807 South 76th Avenue. I have read this ordinance up and down, and I've tried to look at it from every perspective, and I just can't find a way to support it. This ordinance seemingly is meant to perpetuate the system of homelessness that already plagues this city. As we all have heard today, so many reasons already exist that may prevent a person without a home from entering a shelter. On top of this, Omaha, as far as I know, does not have a single city-owned homeless shelter. So when a person without a home is unable to enter a shelter, they must receive a punishment? This ordinance does nothing to help with the most vulnerable in our community. I'm a senior in high school. My understanding of the world is relatively limited, and even I can see right through this ordinance. So please, council members, represent your constituents and vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Gwen back? Okay, that's, is there anybody else that wants to speak in opposition to this that's here that didn't sign up? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Fesserson, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank everyone who came down and shared their stories with us today, and the providers that are here. I do want to thank you for the work you're doing in this area, too, and for your providing your testimony as well. This is just a public hearing, but I haven't had an opportunity to express my opinion on this issue, and I know what that is. So I do want to take a second just to talk about that. And that is, I do not support this ordinance. I do think it criminalizes homelessness. In my conversations with Omaha Police, I believe it's impractical to try and enforce. And in an analysis we received by the public defender, who's spent 50 years in the judicial system, it says strong belief that it will not result in diversion or deliveries to shelters that are already full, but it will involve jail time. And that's not what we're trying to accomplish here. Having said that, I will say, I think all of us have examples in our district of areas that are problematic, and they have excessive trash, and areas that have stayed that way too long. And I think that needs to change, that needs to be done better. But I think that's what we heard yesterday from the mayor. I want to thank Mayor Ewing for listening, and the providers for listening, and for expressing a new plan yesterday that expedites those situations, and I think will handle them in a much better way. So I think we need to give them a chance to have that program of work be effective, and to implement that going forward. And that's why I'll be voting no next week. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodwin, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I do thank everyone who testified today, both for and against, as well as the various people who shared their lived experience, share how they serve the community in this capacity. I look at this from a lot of angles. One, when I was a teenager, I was in a position where, if you counted couch surfing, I would have been counted homeless. So I understand what it means to be in a vulnerable situation. Also, I think we have to understand that many people do touch homelessness, so I do think to, in a way, make it us versus, or us against them in any way, could be not showing the necessary empathy or understanding for not only people who are homeless, have experienced homelessness, or members of this council. I also worked in this space as a program administrator, and understand what coordinating services to prevent homelessness at a food pantry means, because oftentimes, you're trying to provide resources to keep people housed. I found that when funding was available, coordination happened. When funding was not available, it wasn't that organizations didn't want to coordinate or collaborate, but they didn't have the capacity. I had a chance to meet with Mayor Ewing last week, along with several other council members, to discuss our concern for the entire situation, because it is very complex. You never can categorize one group and say why they're homeless. That's just not sensible and/or fair. We discussed the need for urgency and compassion. I think everyone on this council can point to constituents who don't demonize homelessness, or the people who find themselves in that situation, those situations, but do have concerns. Last Monday, for instance, I was called to a neighborhood, and a mother did not want to speak on camera, but she did speak to me. And she was about 100 yards from an encampment. And not only was there excessive trash, but also she had a five-year-old daughter at her knees, and she said, "I don't feel safe walking in my neighborhood." No way did she ever speak ill of the people who were in the encampment, but she did express concern. So I do think that what we find ourselves is in a situation where this ordinance has brought us all here. Well, you'll see that I will vote against it, because I believe that we do need to give our mayor an opportunity to step to the plate and enact the plan. I hope that only this council, but also the organizations that are designated to support these efforts, and those who came out to support those agencies and those plans, will keep the urgency. I worked in this space six years ago, and the problem was very urgent back then. So we have to learn to not just put out the fires, because let's just be honest, the people living in these circumstances are in a crisis mode every day, but stay on top of it for the urgency. So I just wanted to give you a little bit of context, and maybe well-roundedness, that, again, many of us on this council, maybe we had a situation of being almost homeless, or even family members today, who might be out on the streets. And so we look at that, and we consider a well-rounded perspective when we're considering how to problem-solve in this space. But I do not support this ordinance. I know today's not a vote, but I want the community to know where I stand. But I also support how we move forward toward urgency and compassion in this situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rowe, you're recognized.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodwin. I appreciate those words. Today, Councilman Harding took a lot of shots, and I just wanted to thank him publicly for bringing this ordinance. Not that I'm necessarily going to vote for it, but what it did was spark a communication throughout our whole community that we have not had, and that we needed to have. In my faith, I was reading a scripture this morning, and somebody asked Jesus, "What were the, you know, most important things?" And he said, "To love your God with all your heart, with all your soul, and all your mind." And I get that. But the second thing that he said was, "Love your neighbor as yourself." And I think we've heard from those neighbors today, and I think we need to figure out a way to express love to them. Sometimes, love is tough. It's not loving to allow a homeless person to die on the street because she froze to death. That's not, that's not expressing love. So my question is, and I was wondering if, Jason, could you come up? I mean, I think we can do that, right? Can we call, we can call somebody up? Jason, come up. I've read your proposal, and I've met with you, and talked with you about your proposal. And I guess my simple question is, can you pull this off? Can you make it happen? Because so many times... Can you make it happen? Because so many times in the world, we create these silos, and people have, "I've got this idea, you've got this idea, she's got another idea." This is going to take a collaborative effort, and I'm going to put my trust in you, Jason, that you can pull all of the groups together, because I saw the proposal. And I just want to ask that question. Can you pull this off? And can you do it with some sort of sense of urgency? Because it is a serious problem.
Let me start. Do I need to check back in address?
Please, pleasure, here.
Jason Feldhouse, 6101 Dodge Street is my corporate office. 7724 Reed Street in Papillion is my personal address. Don, I'm gonna just...I'm gonna start with your second question, first off. Urgency, absolutely. I have commitment from all of those providers that I listed in the original proposal, and additional providers that we've had talk with afterwards. We are committed to the seven-to-ten-day notice. We are committed to getting in there, expanding our hours, doing on-call status. We're committed, as an organization, to assume that cost, to help take the burden off of the providers in this original pilot, and work with the city council long-term on what that means. I had an opportunity to meet with a couple city council members. Twenty-four hours, I will say, is a non-starter. I mean, if it's 24 hours, I just can't get resources there fast enough. It will be an arrest. Seven to 10 days, I do believe there's an opportunity to strategize. We've also assumed at Threshold COC, much of the work around City View, legacy apartments, and also these new hotels that were closed. The truth is, at the moment of moving, get people out and into other housing options, it is that moment of closure that helps us get that next step into that housing. It is a reality. It defies logic. I understand that. Planning is always the way you want to go, but a lot of the times, we can have a 30-day runway, and it's the last five days that really matter. So I do think the urgency of that seven-to-10 days is actually a tool that we can put in our toolbox and helps us in our practice. Can I pull this off, I think is the big question. And I'll tell you this. You know, from a political point, I have to say yes. But I...from a personal point, I'm gonna tell you, I would rather fail falling forward than falling backwards. We'll find out if I can pull this off. And I assume the responsibility in front of all of you here today. But I want to fall forward if I can. Fair answer?
That's a very fair answer. Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Hugge, you're recognized.
Change in voice stunned me. Jason?
He laughed. Sorry. Yes.
Thanks for sticking this out.
Yes.
It shows you're kind of committed, which I have no doubt you are. Something you said strikes at what I feel is important in this whole issue, and that is on-call and after-hours. How important do you think of a component that that is to being successful to address the unhoused issue?
You know, it's a great question. And I think we've heard that from constituents. When I've gone out and spoke with neighborhoods, they want better response. So I think it's a two-fold piece, right? Like, I think it is, the presence of being there is an outcome, right? Being engaged from the very beginning is an outcome, especially when complaints come in and it's decide to close that encampment. We need to show action. I think that's a fair statement. From a practice perspective, I'm hoping, and my intention of that, is to give us every meaningful second and minute to find a housing outcome versus just another place to encamp. I'll just be upfront with you. The reality is, we're going to work hard to get everybody into housing. We know that you guys have heard enough about the shortages of housing. But if I can start on that first minute from day seven, right, or day one to day seven, I can also start to notify many of my shelter directors about possible needs, share, maybe we can find other individuals in that shelter and get them into other housing. That was in the potential of happening over the next two weeks. Maybe we can front-load that. Some of that is that 30-day planning period we're asking for, to really try to work out what those policies really look like. We're fortunate at Threshold to have a philanthropic commitment to what we call housing problem-solving. So last year, we had 1,000 households that we housed for no minimum of six months and even longer than that. 800 of them were literally homeless. But most of those are episodic homeless individuals that are coming to our shelters. If we can hybrid that, or, you know, rev that engine up, I'm hoping I can build some of that shelter space that's in those shelters to bring the unsheltered in. But some of this is theoretical. I'll be upfront with you. Some of this is theoretical with the intention to deliver.
But if you look around the country, it's not theoretical, because what you're proposing is working in different cities and across the country. It's working.
Right.
I don't think you're recreating the wheel. And I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, please. This is dialogue.
But I got one more question for you.
Please.
In your opinion, do you have a number that you have seen, or do you believe the unhoused has increased over the past year?
Yes. So our official numbers is, we went from 224 in 2024, we went from 224 identified, and to 2025, we went down to 194 identified, unsheltered. That is our federally required winter count. Our summer count went from 342 in 2024 to 344 in 2025. What that's telling me is, in some ways, we're starting to put a cap on it, and our strategies are starting to deliver at the street level. Now, some of those partnerships are general assistance and ways we can leverage the county and other things like that. But I do think we are starting to find our larger, more robust street outreach is showing results. Not fast enough, 100% agree with you on that, but we are getting to some results.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. I'll have some brief comments today, and probably more next week. But I want to start with, thank you, Don, for what you said, because this is exactly my intention, was to address an issue that was growing, in my estimation, and anecdotally, from what I see and from what I'm hearing from constituents all across town. And the time to take to address a problem isn't when it's out of control. It's when it is in control, and you can reel it in and solve the issue. And it's interesting. I know a lot of people assume I'm a cold-hearted individual, and I'm doing this for political reasons, and both of those couldn't be further from the truth. And I think every person that I serve with on this council would tell you the same. So it's unfortunate that some of those accusations are made today, and I'm taking a bit of it personally, as you probably would expect. I might, after a couple hours of listening to it. But what you don't know is, some of the research that I have done, or some of the people I've talked to, or the fact that I've had people in my family homeless. You don't know that, do you? I'll bet no one here today thought that before. That's why I wanted to take this situation, which is very serious, and do something about it. So what I proposed was to come up with a solution to begin that conversation as well, too. And when I first introduced it, and was approached by the mayor's office, and they said, "Hey, would you put this on hold so that we can talk about it?" And I said, "Absolutely. I want to make it a better ordinance. I want to make sure that we're addressing the issue." And from day one, the first thing I said was, I wanted to make sure that the people who are in these situations get the help that they deserve. And it's a public safety issue. It's a public health issue. Right now, we have encampments that have been there for who knows how long. And I've been told that, you know, we go in, and we have scoring systems, and it may be 30 days before they're revisited. Do you know what happens in these encampments? There's rape. There's sex trafficking. There's drug use. There's human squalor. I don't...if I had a daughter or a son that was in those conditions, do I want to wait for 30 days before those issues are addressed, or at least revisited? And I appreciate the efforts of what, you know, has been put...the proposal that Threshold has put before us. But I said to the mayor's office then, and I'll continue to say it, because I want to make an ordinance that's successful for all. I want to work with those people to understand how we can make this better. But I didn't have that opportunity. The first thing I saw was, on Friday at noon, exactly at noon, when Threshold sent a proposal out, that I thought was an unsolicited proposal. Why, I come to find out, when I get a media alert yesterday morning, that it was something that the mayor's office had worked on you with. So it was news to me. I'm still concerned about a seven-to-day stretch, because for exactly that reason I just said. Do I want my son, or my daughter, or your relative to be subjected to those conditions for seven to 10 more days? No. I don't. But what I also wanted to make sure is that, and I've talked to...again, no one's asked me about this, but I've said it. I've talked to the law department about it. Actually, one of the reasons why we have to have jail time as part of the...one of the penalties in there, is that if someone in this condition has...if there's a violation, and they do go to court, that they would have the ability to have a public defender. Am I right on that, Mr. Koozie?
Excuse me, Matt Koozie Law Department. That's correct. State law will only allow courts to appoint the public defender to represent an injured person if the offense carries the possibility of a jail sentence.
So I bet most people probably didn't know that, or why that was included in there. The other ability that we have is, there's no...there's no minimum, again, Mr. Koozie, there's no minimum fine that would be required. It's up to this council. We could set our own standard, right?
That is correct. The way the ordinance is written, as it is right now, it reads "up to" a $300 fine, which means a person could get anywhere between $1 and $300.
Okay, thank you. A couple of other things is that this is a policy, at least what's being proposed...I'm not going to say proposed. What's being discussed, at least at this point, is a policy, and it's not codified. And it's my understanding, or it's my belief, that we need to have this codified. So again, I'm willing to work with whomever on this to make it so that it is a win-win solution. So the people in these conditions, or these situations, get the help that they so desperately need. And we know not everyone is going to take advantage of that. But it's also to make sure that those people, as Ms. Goodwin just said, those people who have their kids sitting on the porch 100 yards away, or 100 feet away from an encampment, and they don't feel like they can go out and play in the yard, because there might be drug needles, there might be, you know, human squalor, there might be whatever the conditions are, we want to make sure that we address those issues. But I think we need to make sure that it's codified, too, so that we can continue to receive federal funding for homelessness work, which would be a jeopardy if it wasn't codified. So again, the offer still stands. I'm willing to work with whomever to make this a better situation. I'll bet a lot of people are kind of surprised by that.
Thank you. And thanks to everybody that's been here today. Jason? Amy. Ladies, the best for last, Councilmember Milton.
And you know what? I'm gonna be real quick, because...
Sorry. You snuck in there.
It's almost 6:30. I just want to take up that extra five minutes, so that I can...so that Levania has to donate to my favorite homeless charity. I just want to say, I think the attacks against Councilman Harding were uncalled-for. Whether you support or don't support this, I really appreciated the people that came down as opponents, that recognized that I think there might be good intentions here, and recognize the fact that Mr. Harding didn't have any bad intentions by doing this, because we do...all of us have had encampments in our district, and we've had constituents that have called us and have problems with the encampments. And so it's, what do we do? And I think it took quite a bit for Councilman Harding to try and come up with something, number one, to save our federal funding, because, by the way, we heard funding, funding, funding for all of our organizations and agencies that are here. It doesn't work when there's not funding, right? So we want to make sure we save that funding. And we also want to make sure that we get the help that the people need, the people that are in those encampments need. And like Mr. Harding, I've had homelessness in my own family. And my mom doesn't mind that I share this. It was her identical twin who suffered from schizophrenia. And she has two kids. One's my age, one's my sister's age. I grew up with her. She looked just like my mother. In fact, you couldn't tell the difference between the two of them, even as a kid. We'd have to...what was my mom wearing this morning? I mean, they looked identical. But because of her schizophrenia, they couldn't find her. I mean, her daughter and her son often didn't know where she was. When she got on her medications, it was great, and she got housing, and she had family that would help pay for that housing. There was no reason why she needed to be homeless, other than her mental health condition. And Connie ended up finding herself in a place in...she went to Phoenix, Arizona, and she was at a bus stop at the wrong time in the wrong place, and she was raped and murdered. And it has always been very difficult. My mother has never been the same since she lost her sister. And it has always been her goal. She wants to see every homeless person get the help that they need. And she prays for not only the homeless people, but their families, and their sisters, and their children. Because my cousins' lives are never going to be the same, they'll never have their mother back. And so there isn't one cause for homelessness. And you can't always force people to do things that they don't want to do, you know? But we need to have it out there, and we need to try and provide them the help. So again, I see both sides. And I think what Councilman Harding is trying to do is, for public health and safety, not just of the people in their houses, but the people who are in the encampments. And his intentions and his heart is in the right place. And we need to do both. We need to figure out how to do both. And I have to tell you, Mr. Feldhouse, when I read your email over the weekend, I was...I thought, you know, could this really work? Because if this could work, that's what I want to do. And I think what you said is, I'd rather fail falling forward than not try at all. And I want to say, that was probably the best thing I heard this entire day. I really do support that, and I really hope that you...we can work together with all, everybody here to make that happen. Mr. Feldman, thank you for moving. I know I couldn't see you over there.
I'm not that tall.
So I think that there's still more...I would like to say, I think there's still more discussion that we need to have at this point. I don't know if this is going to be ready to be voted on a week from today. But because I think we've started some discussions, and I think everybody that testified here today truly had everybody's best interest at heart. I mean, that was the good thing about today, whether you're a proponent or opponent. Like, it was all good people. There were no evil intentions. And I kind of was offended by some of those comments, actually, from people that I really respect, really respect. So I just think that there are a lot more that we can do, and maybe more discussions, and especially with, I mean, the detailed plan that you have. That's what I was extremely impressed with. And I wish that we would have had more time to discuss that before today. So my thought would be, I would like to have more discussion over the next week, and even think about continuing the vote on this for maybe another week or two, so that hopefully the mayor's office will actually meet with Councilman Harding to discuss some of this, like you agreed to do. Because we need to have that. We need to collaborate with the mayor's office, and not just work in silos, because that's not gonna...that's not gonna show the agencies how to collaborate. We first have to collaborate with each other here in City Hall, so that then all the agencies can collaborate with us, and us with them. And I think that would be the best thing to do. So that's all I have to say. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And... And I guess I'll close. It's always fun going last because I can listen to my colleagues who have good intentions on whatever is before us. And listening to the comments of my colleagues and to the people that came down here today, you try to problem-solve the best you can. And I've been fortunate enough to be sitting in this seat for four-plus years. I went to the Midtown Neighbor Association meeting a couple of weeks ago, and I shared with probably about 25 or so people that were there how hard of an issue this is. And what I mean by that, our city attorney's over my left shoulder, I've spent a lot of time talking to him, I spoke to our great public defender, Tommy Riley. Jason, I met with you, I met with, together. I've talked to so many people, I've talked to relatives from San Francisco that have dealt with this. And I always came back to how hard of a problem it is to solve. And in my meeting with the mayor, I was, I had a good can of conversation with a couple of my colleagues as well on what we're doing right now is not working, and we have to do better. And I think the message that the mayor sent, that I was really pleased to hear, was bringing people together. Maybe some of us didn't feel that was the process, but I'm confident that in my conversation with the mayor, I articulated to him what the concerns were, that we didn't react quick enough to these encampments that are in our districts and in the city, to try to give the outreach to the people that are there that need the help. And the mayor listened, and what the mayor did was bring all the people together, as he likes to say, "One Omaha." And the mayor did that, and I walked out of that meeting with him, and I went to his press conference yesterday with all the people in the community that understand it more than most of us will probably ever know, on what it takes to try to help people. It's not perfect, it's frustrating, you get knocked down and you get back up. And in that press conference, the mayor showed great leadership, in my view, to break down the walls and bring people together to try a different path to solve this complex problem that's not an Omaha problem, it's everywhere. We're fortunate enough that it's not as bad in our community, but as Councilmember Harding said, you want to try to make sure we do all we can to try to address it. And I think that's the guidance that the mayor, through the great team that he has assembled. It's not going to fix everything, but I think it's a great step and a message to the community that we hear you, we're trying to fix it, and this is the path forward that the mayor is offering to try to do that. Councilmember Harding brought this ordinance. He and I have had a lot of conversations on it. I don't agree with everything that's in it, but he brought it because he thought this will get a conversation going. This is what he came up with. At the end, I don't support it, but I'm glad that he brought it because we're having a conversation here and with everybody in the community that we don't want to forget about the problem, we want to try to solve it. And that's why I'm hopeful going forward that through the guidance of the mayor and the team that he has, working with the council and people in the community, that we can try to do a lot better in helping the people and cleaning these areas up, because that's a big complaint we get, that there's a lot of trash and debris that needs to be picked up. So all of us want to do better. The community wants to do better, and I think that's what this good discussion that we had here tonight has showed us. And we're going to continue to build on that and work with everybody together to try to go forward and do better. So I'll look forward to next week, and I appreciate everybody that contacts in my office, not only the generic emails, but also the truly from the heart emails that people sent. They're not dismissing people that are down on their luck, and they're not, by the way, there's also businesses, there's a balance here. There's people that are trying to rent new apartments that they're not blaming people for being in a tent nearby, but it scares people, and it's, you try to balance that, respecting the business owners, but also the people in the community that need the help. So that's what we're going to continue to try to do, and I'm looking forward to next week. And thanks again, everybody, for your patience, for being here and offering your voice as well. Thank you.
Non-action items, items 51 through 64, do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on an agenda for consideration.
Motion to adjourn. Row call.
Rowe, Festerson, Goodwin, Harding, Hug, Melton. Mr. President.
Aye.
Motion passed 7 to 0, meaning is adjourned at 6:35.